All right, very good. Good afternoon, everyone. Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll so we might establish a court?
Mayor Protem Ashby?
Here.
Councilmember Warren?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Shenier?
Here.
Councilmember Guetta?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Carr?
Here.
I expect Councilmember Hanson momentarily, and Mayor Steinberg?
I am here. Everyone who can please rise if you might. I'd ask Councilmember Shenier to please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We have a very lengthy agenda focused on land use planning here tonight, but before we get into the meat of our agenda, have a bittersweet, but very special presentation to make virtually to one of my interns. You know, and we sort of use that term a little bit lightly because that term does not do justice in any way to the contribution of Denny Mangers. Today or yesterday was Denny's last day with the city. And I cannot put into words, at least adequate words, what Denny Mangers means to me personally, to our city, and to our entire community. And since we have a lengthy meeting ahead, I may wait to say and write something lengthier that does justice to his contributions, to my life, to my public service, but more importantly, to our entire city and community. In the meantime, I will just say to Denny, thank you for leading the creative economy movement in our city. Thank you for your vision. Thank you for your hard work, your people skills, and your doggedness. Thank you for believing that a great city prioritizes arts and culture as much or more as we prioritize sports and other entertainment. Thank you to Michael, who's on the call here, Michael Sestak, for being a great husband and supporter of your, Denny's, great passions. And Denny, thank you for being a great and wise council. So maybe I have said it all, but surely not-
Oh, go on, there's more.
No, there is more. Surely not enough. And I can say, Dennis, that I look forward to pulling you out of retirement for a third time sometime sometime in the near future. Because, Denny, as you know, the story goes is when I was elected to lead the Senate, he had just retired from a long and successful career leading the cable television industry. And I said, you know, I got this new job that may be kind of challenging, especially with budget calamity and everything else. Why don't you come to work with me? And he did and helped guide me through that very first difficult year. And when I became mayor, pulled him back out of retirement again. And he's given us four incredible years. And so, you know, I'm just, I'm gonna pick my spot and wait for the third time. But anyways, Steve Hanson, you had some words to share, I know.
Yes, and we have a special guest with us. Say hi, Henry.
Hi, Henry.
Well, Denny, you've been a mentor to me since I arrived in Sacramento and LGBT community and the arts community. You've been a tremendous leader. But at the city, you've been a bridge for so many different people to find their place, their way to help, and help us really create new forms of community that we didn't know we could do. And I think your legacy is broad, and it's touched many people. In the note that you sent out today saying goodbye, I noted the responses from people who didn't know each other, but who found equal joy, and they found pure opportunity in the work that you've done. And so I'm just very grateful, you and Michael, for giving us four years. We will no longer have in the mayor's office the oldest intern in the country, in the world, maybe the galaxy. I expect that this next year, where you take some time, maybe travel and do other things, we'll come back to us in 12 months, and you'll find new ways to give back to the city and the people that you love. So thank you, Denny. Thank you, Michael. And we appreciate all that you've done for us.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. Denny, I'm gonna keep it short. You know, when I grow up, that may or may not happen, I want to be as suave and debonair and erudite as you are. Probably too high a bar for me to attain, but I have to tell you, when I look at the two of you there, you and Michael, I just see so much goodness, so much dedication, and your public service has gone beyond reproach. You're an awesome human being, and, you know, we love you. That's it in a nutshell. Thank you for everything.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Warren?
Yes, thank you. Hey, I just want to say, Dennis and Michael, great seeing you guys again. And the one thing that I recognized about Dennis some time ago is that he never seems to age. You know, he has looked the exact same from the moment I met him, maybe 15, 20 years ago, through ALF. And I just want to say, Dennis, you know, job well done. I hope you finally enjoy your retirement, you and Michael, travel the world, see what you haven't seen already, and make the best of what's left in life. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Many years. Vic Jennings?
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you for being a role model for a lot of us who ventured into public service and saw that you had served for five decades and had done just an incredible job in every different area that you've done. Thank you for the work that you've done in the performing arts, especially with our young people, and giving them the opportunity to become artists of their own. And your commitment to raising money for them to be able to learn the arts the way you once performed yourself. And just thank you for all you've done to make Sacramento a better place. Can't let you know how much we appreciate it. And Michael, thank you for supporting the man that we are honoring today.
Thank you.
Who else has their hand raised here? Councilman Shenier?
Yeah, just real quickly, Denny. Thank you, Michael. Thank you very much for keeping him whole and coming in and, you know, through thick and thin and, you know, bruised ankles, things like that. Just showed up every day, kind of like the mailman. Just deliver all the time.
Either rain, or sleet, or snow.
Yeah, I just think you both have a legacy in the city, which I know is not completed yet, but you've done so much for Sacramento. On behalf of all the folks I represent, I just want to say thank you. And for my-
Thank you, Jay. Thank you.
Excellent. Who else do we have hand, who else? Councilman Guetta?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Michael, and thank you, Denny. Michael for sharing us, Denny and Denny, thank you. I met you the first time right out of college when I was a Senate Fellow, and you always gave your time to all the young staff and professionals who are looking to try to do something different. And I appreciate your mentorship, both then and then in this opportunity. You've always done that. You even came in and been the fellow for the Senate, for the mayor here, you know, as well, the intern, and appreciate that guidance you've given to so many people.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you. You know, the one thing Denny will never talk about because he's so very modest, is that there are hundreds of people in this community who he has mentored. And especially during much tougher times for young men especially, but I think men and women who were coming out, who were scared and, you know, worried about rejection from family and friends and workplace. He guided and continues to guide so many people through, through being themselves and loving themselves. And, you know, there's some things you just can't put into a, can't put into a speech, a book, or a tribute that is even more long lasting. So that's the last nice thing I have to say. Denny, yours?
I'll be as brief as you are because I know what a council meeting you have ahead of you. Let me just say, this has been an amazing opportunity. I have loved every day that I've had the opportunity to work with this mayor. And he has given me the opportunity to do something that I love and to pursue my passion. You can't ask for anything better than that. Everybody knows how I love this city. When I got out of the legislature, it was very clear to me that I wanted this to be my home, my city. I stayed here and got involved right from the beginning. I admire each of you very, very much. I've had a chance to work with all of you up close on LGBT, arts, and other issues. I know all of you have a great passion for public service. And I know personally that you're all people of great character. And it's just been a real pleasure to work with all of you. I'd like to point out in closing that every single vote that had anything to do with arts or culture in the city or its funding received a unanimous vote this last four years from the city council. Nobody ever voted no for art and culture or arts education on the city council. So, Councilman Hanson, for your leadership in the arts and the LGBT community and all you've done your two terms of mayor, again, for the opportunity to serve with you in the Senate, and now again here, I just am a very grateful guy. So I'll miss all of you because I'm gonna take a year off and just, when we're allowed to travel, Mike and I will, I'm gonna write and read and reflect and really kind of contemplate the next chapter, as one does it, Edie. So thanks very much for this recognition. You know how much I appreciate it. And it's been a real pleasure. Thank you.
So do we need to call you every time we have a vote?
If you're tempted to vote no, I think you should call me for council. Other than that, you're on your own, council.
Good man. Thank you. And thank you, Michael.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do for our city.
Okay, very good, you guys. Now let's get to the hard parts here. That was the fun. We've got, let us begin with item, we have a consent calendar, excuse me, of course.
Mr. Mayor, would you do the closed session report out, please?
I guess a very important closed session report. There's nothing to report for closed session. Okay, so having done that, let's take on the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I have two callers on the consent calendar.
Yep. Hello? Yep.
Thank you. I have two callers on the consent calendar.
Okay.
May we have our first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Courtney Copeland. I'm a proud resident of District Four. I live in Alcoa Flat, and I'm calling in regard to consent item one, the response to the grand jury report about police vacancies. I've read the response, and I actually find it unsatisfactory. So I'd hope that you would not sign it today and maybe do some more thinking on it. In particular, I'm looking at a paragraph on page nine in which you guys cite growing levels of homelessness, increasing numbers of citizens with mental health challenges on the streets, and increased numbers of released inmates as justification to try and spend more money recruiting more police officers. And people like myself, we keep calling and saying policing is not going to solve homelessness. Policing is not going to solve mental health crises. It's not going to provide reentry services. We need money for affordable housing and for solutions like mental health first, for reentry services, for jobs. And so for those calls to keep falling on deaf ears, and then to see those listed in this response as an excuse to try and get a PR firm for the police department is just kind of disappointing. I'd like to see another attempt with this response. And in that same paragraph, there's kind of a rhetorical question. Has the shortage of patrol officers made it difficult for the police department to keep up with crime? But at the same time, we report that crime in Sacramento is actually declining. So I don't think our problem is a lack of PR for Sacramento policing. Maybe the reason people don't want to be police officers is that policing isn't going to solve what's most relevant to the lives of Sacramentoans. So I'm not satisfied with the response. I'd love to see an attempt that gets more at these core needs like housing and work and mental health crises and non-police responses to these things. I hope you'll take that into consideration. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd like to just respond briefly to this, and I'm just gonna respond to calls. I appreciate the call and appreciate the concern. And in the first weeks of January, we are going to devote most of a full council agenda to the Office of Community Response, which is our beginning but ambitious effort to redefine the role of a police officer in our city and to start delegating a calls through the 911 system and otherwise for homelessness, for mental health, to non-law enforcement personnel where it is safe and where it is appropriate. And that, I think, will be the time to have a real intelligent discussion about the balance here. Because at the same time, I will say to you, as I look at what happened at Arden Fair last Friday night, that I for one want to see more gang enforcement. I want to see more gang enforcement, as one example. And so I know that there's a lot of strong feelings on these issues, and rightfully so. But beginning now and into 2021, I want to be, for myself, less ideological about this and thoughtful about, yes, how we shift resources and how we don't have police respond to a lot of the kind of calls you're talking about. But at the same time, we make sure that when it comes to issues that require not only prevention and early intervention, but genuine law enforcement, that we have the capability of being able to do that as well. So I just want to say that you raise a very important discussion, and I look forward to starting off the new year in January, making that one of the lead items that we talked about. Next caller?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, Mayor Steinberg and City Council. I just want to point out that all summer long, your space was taken up by concerned community members that were telling you to defund the police. And every Tuesday, we came at 5 o'clock telling you to defund the police, defund the police, defund the police. And now we're sitting here looking at your consent calendar, which is talking about concerns that we don't have enough police, right? We have more than enough police, and we don't want police. And we were trying to tell you this all summer long, and you gave us this whatever alternative community response that hasn't even started yet, right? You diverted money to an office that you called the Office of Community Response, and it hasn't even started yet. So no, we don't need police. We don't, we don't, you don't need to restructure or, you know, redefine. Get rid of them. That is what we're asking you to do. And Steinberg, you're saying that you want more gang enforcement? Gang activities isn't going to be stopped by police. It's stopped by community members who are able to love the youth, right? And we wouldn't have these issues if your budget wasn't fucking racist, okay? We wouldn't have these fucking issues if your budget wasn't fucking racist and actually invested in the needs that caused crime to begin with. And I just wanted to take the time to name folks that were killed by police 2020, by SacPD, Auguste Morales, Jeremy Southern, Michael Wright, Albert Wheeler, and Bruce Allen Shoemaker. These were all killed by your police department, and all of this could have been de-escalated and could have been avoided if your budget actually prioritized things that we need, like mental health services. So I'm just calling to oppose this item completely. Do not fucking find this, Mayor Steinberg. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. We have no more callers.
Okay, is there a motion and a second on the consent calendar?
If Larry moved, I'll second, Mayor.
All right, I've heard Vice Mayor Harris, heard Councilman McCarr, I'm not sure who.
Carr first, Harris second.
Okay, very good. Let's call the roll on the consent calendar, please.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Hi.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
I said yes, Mindy.
Thank you. Councilmember Shenier?
Yes.
Councilmember Guetta?
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Carr?
Hi.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Hi. Yeah, okay. Let us move now to item 16, please.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Garrett Norman, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. And I am here tonight to present the Gateway West Commercial Project. On the screen before you is an aerial image of North Natomas. The site is highlighted here in yellow. Here is Del Paso Road up to the top, Arena Boulevard. Here is the former arena site, Centene, Sundance Lake HOA, and Universal Technical Institute right here. Here is the site zoomed in. Again, the property is highlighted in yellow. Here is UTI, Sundance Lake Neighborhood Association, Centene over here, Interstate 5, and Arena Boulevard and Duck Corn Drive. Okay. This project includes a total of 18,500 square feet of commercial uses and requires council's decision because of the rezone, which is a legislative entitlement. The rezone from employment center to general commercial or C2 is specifically needed for the proposed land uses of the two drive-throughs, alcohol sales with a gas station, and tobacco sales with the gas station. Here on parcel one is proposed two multi-tenant commercial buildings that are focused on a centralized outdoor seating patio that faces the proposed roundabout. Everything proposed on parcel one here is allowed by the current zoning. Parcel two down here is a single multi-tenant commercial building that includes a attached drive-through coffee shop. This parcel requires the rezone for the drive-through. Three over here is an eight-pump gas station that can fuel 16 cars simultaneously. It includes a convenience market and attached drive-through fast food restaurant. Alcohol sales and tobacco sales are also proposed within the convenience market, and a car wash is also proposed. This parcel requires a rezone for the drive-through and alcohol and tobacco sales. A rezone is not required for the gas station because it is allowed in the current zone. However, a PUD schematic plan amendment is needed. The final proposal on parcel four over here to the right is to allow a hotel with approximately 100 rooms. A PUD schematic plan amendment is also needed to allow a hotel on this parcel. Staff is opposed to rezoning this property for development of a commercial center that is primarily focused on meeting the daily needs of the highway user. This is contrary to the envisioned land uses of support retail that is allowed in the site's current zones of employment center. Support retail uses typically focus on meeting the needs of the neighboring residents and employees. Examples of allowed support retail in employment center zones include laundry facilities, postal services, printing services, restaurant dining, and other similar community-serving uses. Staff work closely with the applicant to provide a plan that provides greater emphasis on neighborhood and employment-supporting retail and that are more aligned to the employment center designation and less to highway-oriented uses. And in many ways, the proposed plan achieves this by providing public gathering places that allow for outdoor dining and an architecture that responds to the surrounding context with buildings that engage the street. However, staff feels the uses remain largely focused on the automobile and which the community has continued to express opposition to. Staff presented this project to the Planning and Design Commission on September 10th. The commission ultimately passed a motion recommending the council deny staff's recommendation and approve the project as proposed. The commission felt the site was appropriate for the proposed commercial uses due to the proximity of Interstate 5 and should be approved because it complies with all city codes and that the proposed uses do not create impacts envisioned within the community plan. Staff is recommending denial of this project because rezoning the property to allow for auto-dependent uses is inconsistent with the goals and policies of the North Natomas Community Plan related to employment center zones. Additionally, the North Natomas Community Plan specifically designated areas within the community for the highway-oriented commercial uses, which are designated up near Del Paso Road and Interstate 80 and Truxell Road. This concludes my presentation this evening. We have staff representation from all departments tonight to help answer any questions. Thank you.
All right. If I made the protocol here, you know, we haven't had many land use controversies in my first term here as mayor. Protocol now is to allow the applicant to be able to present, since this is a call-up or an appeal, a call-up?
This project is before, this project requires an action by the council regardless because of the rezone.
Regardless. Okay. Then I think probably I'd like to hear from the applicant. I think we'd all want to hear from the applicant. Then we'll turn it over to Councilmember Ashby, if she chooses. And then we can open it up for the public testimony. And then, I know I have many questions. I'm sure the council does as well as we grapple with this. So who is representing the applicant here?
Mr. Mayor, the Gateway West project team is here. I'm Nick Abdis with the Thomas Law Group on behalf of Gateway West LLC. We opted to convene our project team together for logistical reasons, so we're all together here for the most part. So if I may, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's certainly a lot to talk about this evening. I'd like to set the table a bit before we get into the project specifics with our design team lead, Alan Hahn, the CH&amp;D Architects. You know, as Garrett sort of alluded to, this project has had a long and at times tormented history. It's been well over three years since the initial planning application was submitted, but discussions with the city have been occurring for much, much longer. This project has engaged in a tremendous amount of outreach and dialogue, literally years. And this project has been designed no less than 10, 10 times over in terms of the iterations of the conceptual site plan, incorporating the comments of city staff and input for the community and all of the concepts that we've worked with, which staff included two drive-throughs and a gas station. The result of that effort is the site plan that you see before you today, which previously did have staff support, support both in terms of the site plan itself and the proposed uses. I did provide some background to the council on this particular point, which I'll get to in a bit after Alan's presentation. Needless to say, our team worked intimately with city staff to make the project less dense and better oriented to respect the residential community to the west and the freeway to the east while at the same time meeting the goals and objectives of the Gateway West PUD, the general plan and community plan. So with that, I'm gonna hand the controls over to Alan Hahn, who will go over some of the design aspects, and I'd like to make some closing remarks. Alan?
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and City Council members. Can we carve up the parking? Before you today is, we're prepared to show you some of the attributes of our project. And this goes, are we, here we go, we're looking on getting our parking up. Okay, here we go. Thank you. Next slide. As Garrett, and thank you, Garrett, for making the presentation. As Garrett, and thank you, Garrett, for making the presentation. As Garrett has mentioned earlier, indicated here on the northwest portion of the, I guess, the intersection of Arena and I five is where our project site is located. As you can see from this image right here, our first drive is approximately seven hundred and thirty-five feet from the highway off-ramp, and then another almost a thousand feet actually to Duckhorn. So that gives a little sense of how far off of the freeway we truly are. And central site map, I'm going to spend a little bit of time on here because, as Nick mentioned, we actually spent a fair amount of time trying to be very conscious of what the neighborhood has been telling us and trying to bring as many attributes for the community as possible, making this a true gateway into the community versus just a happenstance location. Starting on the east side of the site, you see a bike trail. Ownership and development is actually proposing to extend the bike trail from its current location all the way around the east side of our property and actually coming on to Arena. But what you may not notice, and I'm going to bring up off of that bike trail, we have numerous locations that actually bring the walkers and the bikers into the site starting at by the hotel. Circle up to the, up right, right? And then sorry, I'm going to be out of the picture for a minute because I'm going to stand to the screen. Right at this location, you'll see that we have access into the site, another location here, and then the location here. So again, the idea is to bring as, to have the site be as pedestrian and bike-remed to the community as possible. One of the other things we heard very strongly from the community that was, there was a fair amount of traffic generated by the UTI school. So to help, in our vision, to help mitigate sort of that, we actually included many connections points between our UTI neighbor. We have a drive access right here that connects to the UTI campus, and we have numerous pedestrian access, one this location, another this location, and another one at this location here. And the goal is, as the UTI student comes in for class, one of the things is we're trying to keep the UTI students all within the neighborhood without driving onto Duckhorn, again, to mitigate and reduce traffic on Duckhorn. As such, we have a lot of amenities outside. We have coffee shops, we're talking a lot of the community-oriented eateries, services, and items like that, that the UTI students that at lunchtime, they don't have to come off and get in the car, drive across freeway, and drive back out of congestion. The goal is keep them on-site, and for those, how should I say this? For those students that are a little bit on the lazy side that have to drive, we still keep them on our site with this driveway around this location so they could drive internally to all the amenities that we provide without actually impacting onto Duckhorn. And I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the community enhancements, as Garrett has mentioned, buildings three and four, the dislocations. We actually provided an outdoor venue location, and one of the things that we really focused on was the idea is how do we bring, with retail at any community center, it's when you see activity, it promotes activity, it creates interest. So one of the things that we want to do is create an activity center per se, so to engage with the Sundance community, and one of the things is we're really promoting having a lively patio per se. And I know in the Natomas area, they have pre-COVID, and during summertime, they have numerous little bands and items like that, and that can be a little, little like a micro, what's a micro music venue or poetry venue, or just a hangout space in general to boot, and we'll show up, show up on Reddit. We have a number of seating areas, one right here. We have seating, you know, a restaurant area, a seating area here. And for our coffee, we actually have expanded seating areas in this location. Again, the idea is anything for the students, we can keep them all on-site. We connect to our mini-mart should they really want to grab something a little bit more, you know, a different venue, maybe some other food from the, we have connection to this location. And of course, it all ties back is for when the hotel gets built, that the hotel patrons also can easily walk to all these venues without getting in their car and driving through. Next slide, please. This is a brief overview, 3D image of what we're talking about. So you have a sense of scale of where everything is. And then uniquely on the hotel, one of the things that we ask and focus on is actually provide some areas that we can provide for community venues. We actually have an outdoor area at this location, and then one of the, to be further developed. But one of the things that we're trying to do is have areas where the neighborhood can actually come and use and not necessarily just the patrons or the people like in the hotel. So making more of a community resource. And looking at some images, this is if I'm the UTI student in their parking lot, this is what you see looking at the future proposed hotel. This is, again, I'm the UTI student. I'm now just walked into the hotel parking lot, and I'm walking out towards the mini, the mini-mart convenience store. As you notice, the drive-through at this location right here is heavily, I can move that, yeah, right in this location here, with heavily landscaped, because the goal is, even though it's a drive-through, we want to make it a traffic view so you don't see a large queue of cars. The idea is to make it a pleasant view, and as you know, like most drive-throughs, there are no windows per se, and the point part is if you look at it, we do have some vision glass, so it throws eyes on the street. Next slide, please. This is looking from our bike pathways. Again, you'll focus on the pathways into our site. Next slide, please. And this is just some, the exterior elevations of the convenience store, mini-mart, and the fuel islands. As you notice, the uses of materials, as we go through the, through the, I'm going to say through the gateway buildings, it all uses the richest materials. We have the undulating stone, we have cementous panels that emulate a wood feel. So it warms up, so we're not looking at a, how should I say, a roadside convenience. We're looking at something that harmonizes with the architectural flavor of more of a residential feel. Looking at this portion, buildings two, three, and four, this is what we see as truly the gateway into the community. As we talked about, here's some additional seating areas for the coffee area. We have, again, our plaza, music plaza, and additional ceilings in this location. All of it is interconnected through walkways and pathways through the space. So again, we're trying to really promote a pedestrian-friendly center. Next slide, please. This is looking from Duckhorn, just like the side says. So I really wanted you to focus on the fact that this is, we purposely made this portion building taller to emulate, again, the gateway to the community, and we want to create activity. So we actually expanded the architecture here and actually put outdoor seating in this location. Again, activity promotes interest, and we promote interest activity. We believe it brings the right feel to the community. Next slide. This slide is very important because, again, this is actually the drive-through for the, for the coffee shop, heavily landscaped with decorative landscaping. We opted not to go with landscaping because it's a softer image, and actually brings some undulations, and then as the weather changes and so forth, the landscape actually changes color. And the biggest thing is eyes on the street with vision glass in these locations. So what you really see here as a pedestrian walks by, you really don't see any queuing of the cars, but what you see is the architecture of the building and eyes into the space between the glass. Again, this is from the, I'm going to say the turnabout. Again, if I'm looking out there, I see people, I see food, food player, I see lit trees in this location, trellis, the idea is promote activity. And so as I'm in the community, I'm bike-riding, I could stop in here, hang out with my friends, again, really promote the community attributes. And this one is actually coming around as I'm coming into the site towards the hotel. And again, the richest of the materials, again, is less commercial, more residential and feel we're shooting for. One of the other things, this is the drive off of Duckhorn into the site between buildings two, between actually two and four. As you see our mini-marts behind here, but I bring together another seating area. What happens is our, our big seating areas around this corner, around back, so you don't see, but we have numerous seating areas. So again, the goal is to encourage pedestrians, encourage the neighbor to use our space, encourage the neighborhood to sit and blend, not only our neighbors, but also our UTI students. And again, a fair point that for us, we're trying to bring venues to the site that actually encourages the UTI students to, hey, stick around, don't drive around at lunchtime, even after school, stick around, spend your money with us, hang out in our space, and lessen the traffic for the community. Next slide. This is actually from our mini-mart site, looking back towards the, I'm going to say the primary corner building. Again, additional seating area. We actually have a bench seating area at this location with a decorative raised stone platform. So again, it's not just your retail center where it's just storefront, walkway, cars. We're really promoting hangout spaces. Anyway, that one, turn this over to me a little bit. Oh, got the chair out of my hand, sorry.
All right, thanks, Alan, for that. As everyone can see, obviously, a lot of detail has been paid, excruciating detail, attention paid to with this project. This is not something that came out of the shadows at the eleventh hour. You know, over a year and a half ago, an entirely new design team was actually engaged by the developer, in this case, to take a fresh look at planning the site and the design of the buildings, taking into account the nature and the scope of the comments received from both staff, the community, and the constraints of the site. The site plan in front of you this evening was a result of that effort, was discussed at length with city staff to determine whether or not we were on the right track and whether we have something that the city staff could ultimately support. We felt like we did, so much so that we asked staff to put it in writing. At that point, we had spent several hundred thousands of dollars in our efforts, and further work would result in additional six-figure costs. And certainly, our hope was to avoid the extremely awkward situation that we have this evening. I distributed the email that I'm talking about to the city this morning. I just briefly want to touch on a couple of points made in that letter. This is the letter dated April twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, in the packet I sent to you. It's addressed to me, Nick. I want to thank the applicant team for taking the time to incorporate the many comments they received to revise the Gateway site plan, which is attached. Staff, and I'm paraphrasing here to the end, staff at this point is supportive of the revised site plan and the commercial uses in the two drive-through restaurants. While we still need to know more about the operation of the gas station, like the hours, the use itself is appropriate for the site. Thank you and the applicant team for the hard work put into this project. Now, certainly, that, that email stands in stark contrast to the rationale for the denial on the staff report this evening. Certainly, I take a lot of issues with the recommendation to deny the project based on inconsistency with the nineteen ninety-four community plan and not, and the project not being neighborhood-serving. That's simply not the case, and I just wanted to highlight a few things that seem incongruous with this rationale in the staff report. And I remember in twenty nineteen, in April of twenty nineteen, I personally remember several meetings with the City Urban Design Manager and planning staff on this issue, particularly moving the gas station closer to the freeway because at that time, the site plan had the gas station on the corner of Duckhorn and Arena, and encouragement by city staff to put the retail, commercial, and coffee shop adjacent to the neighborhood. This, the site plan was developed with the neighborhood-serving theme in mind and was developed with intense community's input, stakeholder input, and staff input. And make no mistake about it, even in its proposed location, the gas station and the convenience store will be used by neighbors as well as others in the Gateway West PUD, like the UTI, as we discussed a moment ago. And we don't have to look any further than the city's approval of discretionary entitlements on an adjacent property across the freeway. And if you recall, actually, it was at the Planning Commission, the Allegheny property at the corner of Arena and East Congress, as you can see on this, on this exhibit on the screen right now that was approved in June of twenty twenty. City-approved a gas station, fast food, a convenience store that will sell beer, wine, and hard alcohol, and that has a full tobacco section. That project had the support of staff and was approved without incident. And as you can see, that project is much closer and much denser to residential adjacent to that property. Let me go to the next slide here is a slide showing identical land use situation in Elgrove, both of these instances off of Laguna and Elgrove Boulevards. You know, we have virtually identical land uses to Gateway West next to residential. If anything, these examples are more intense than what we're proposing on the site, certainly. And on the issue of intensity, let's be clear about some of the background on the land use entitlements that are currently on the site. You know, currently, that site by right has twenty thousand square feet of commercial, which includes retail space as well as other commercial and restaurant space, and there is also the allowance for seventy thousand square feet of office. That is allowed today, and I would note that these uses would need to exit on, from this property on Duckhorn based on the city's determination that no automobiles should exit onto Arena Boulevard from this site. And furthermore, development of this site today with the by-right uses would result in the removal of the same number of trees. I know that's been an issue that's been raised by numerous commenters. So what we're proposing today is certainly more neighborhood-serving than what's proposed, what's permitted on the site currently by right, and certainly more neighborhood-serving than the warehouse distribution facility proposed south on Duckhorn that we understand is pursuing an application with the city. And so let me touch on the existing plan due development. That, the PUD was found to be consistent with the general plan when it was originally approved back in the late nineties. The PUD states in relevant part that the employment center designation is intended to accommodate a flexible range of uses, including highway commercial. These uses can be spread throughout the Gateway West project or aggregated at the freeway and can be expanded to accommodate a hotel hospitality use. Retail uses include typical highway commercial uses as auto-related services, gas, parts, service, et cetera, hotels, restaurants, and convenience markets. These are not made-up facts. These are facts that speak for themselves. You know, here is the slide that compares the existing entitlements and the proposed entitlements, and as Garrett mentioned in his presentation, really, the difference between what's allowed out there today and what, what we're asking for with these entitlements are the two drive-throughs and the alcohol and tobacco sales. Everything else is the same. And I think it's important to note our proximity to I five. That is a freeway that connects Canada to Mexico. The PUD recognizes this fact and allows for typical highway commercial uses at the freeway interchange, which at the time of the PUD approval were found to be consistent with the nineteen ninety-four community plan.
Mr. Abdis, Nick, I'm going to ask you to wrap up, please, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
In any event, at this point, we're told this project is too, too auto-centric. So with that, it's really with this background that I'm left scratching my head here, Mr. Mayor and honorable councilmembers. We thought we had a good, honest dialogue with staff about the nature of the project. We have a good, high-quality project from a developer with a long history of quality projects and is making significant investments in the city. Our project here, the team is here this evening to answer any questions. We appreciate your indulgence with our presentation.
Thank you very, very much, okay? I think everybody, we, I think everybody gets the idea because it was very, very thorough. Mayor Protem Ashby, do you want to speak now, or should we take the public testimony?
I am happy to speak now, and maybe that will help with some of the public testimony. And, and then, Mayor, I would ask to speak again at the end of, of public comment, if that would be okay?
Of course, go ahead.
So the, first of all, just thank you all for allowing me to participate in this. um, item by postponing it to today. I appreciate that very much. It's an important project to my community. And as Mr. Abdis has stated, it has been in the works for quite some time. Actually, prior to Mr. Abdis's engagement and Ms. Thomas's engagement, this project was previously represented by Mr. Thatch and Mr. Hooper. So I've actually been working on it for somewhere around seven years, I believe. And I'm just, you know, as you all know very well, in projects like this, uh, we're not allowed to talk about it and I'm not allowed to have a public opinion until this day, until the day that it comes before the council and we hear from the project proponent. That being said, I have met with Nick and his team and prior to Nick, Mr. Thatch, Mr. Hooper and their team dozens and dozens of times over the year to offer my, over the years, to offer my suggestions and input and to direct them to community leaders that I thought would be helpful in navigating a somewhat challenging piece of land. So I'm gonna just give you guys my overall comments and then I'd love to hear from the community. And I know this is the first time my colleagues are hearing from me on this topic. And in many, in, in almost all instances, the first time that the community is hearing from me too, much to their chagrin, because they have by the hundreds been reaching out to me, asking me to take a position, which I did not do, but I will do tonight. The vast majority of the community is not supportive of this project. The project does not meet the minimum standards, much less move us towards our future goals. A gas station with 16 pumps is not the Sacramento of 2020 that we all aspire to be. It is in an area already served by gas. There is a gas station directly across the street. Fast food is not healthy nor good for the climate and not a value that we place next door to schools. This project includes gasoline, alcohol, tobacco, fast food, a strip mall, removal of 23 trees and has poor access. It is not only not ideal, but it is not compliant with the 2035 general plan, nor is it compliant with the 1994 North Natomas Community Plan, which is why our own city staff are recommending today that we deny the project. The strip mall is not needed in Natomas. We have a lot of vacant malls or uh, retail uses similar to this available right now. The project proponent showed you pictures of a Starbucks. There is a Starbucks less than a stone's throw away from this directly across the street, right next to the gas station that is directly across the street. So the proposal is a gas station and a Starbucks across the street from a gas station and a Starbucks. Obviously, the local developer who built the Bel Air across the street along with the gas station and the Starbucks is not in favor of this project. And it is also in large part why most of the community is not in favor of the project. It should not be brushed over or glossed over that this project also requests the removal of 23 trees. In Natomas, removing 23 partially mature trees is a big deal because we have very few mature trees. And if we continue to remove them, we will never be like your districts, every last one of you that has beautiful, mature tree canopies that define our city. This project greenlights a hotel. It's not needed. I have five hotels that were either built in the last 24 months or are currently under construction, five in one district. The proponent does not have a current provider for that hotel, but seeks approval anyway. This site is already approved for use as a restaurant. You heard one of the proponents, uh, their applicants describe a scene not unfamiliar to Natomas, where there is outdoor dining happening and music playing. That's true. None of the locations in Natomas where that occurs include a mini mart or a gas station. They are all sit-down restaurants, which this site is already approved to be. So if that is the vision that the applicant would like to achieve, they do not need our approval today. They can move such a project forward, which would please the community greatly because that is exactly what they want. I have also recommended repeatedly to the applicant that they include a childcare center rather than these types of projects. This is adjacent to a very large school, UTI, uh, and there is no childcare center nearby. I believe that would be a better and stronger community use and one that we all know is in high demand. The community has repeatedly told the applicant that they do not want tobacco, alcohol, gas, fast food or strip mall at that location. Over the five years that, that Nick and his team have been involved, there have been some changes to the project. They have primarily been facade, as you heard them describe to you today, talking about the materials used and the richness of the materials used. The problem is uh, roadside amenity does not change because it has wood paneling. It's still a roadside amenity. At times when the community has said things like no gas, the developer has come back to say, okay, rather than A and P M, we'll put in Chevron because it's a higher-end user. But you saw Mr. Abdis show you today, less than half a mile away where Chevron is already going in on the Allegheny property across the street, which is not next to any other gas station. It does not have a gas station nearby. However, that Chevron owner has uh, non-competition rights, which are going to make it very difficult for this Gateway West project to actually provide a Chevron. They also claim they have Starbucks. However, my office has received calls from the developer across the street, who is in contract for more than 10 years with the Starbucks, that literally I could throw a rock at and hit from the site where these folks are proposing uh, that it be, another one be built. Underground in Natomas, there is, there are extraordinary groundwater issues. This site will require that the state weigh in on whether or not gas can actually go at that location. And it would have to be monitored at a higher level than most places because of its proximity to the nearby lake and to the detention basins and the water facilities underground in that area for tank leakage for the future, which as you all know, is one of the reasons why we wanna move away from gas and why we don't need two gas stations at one intersection. The community fatigue on this project cannot be overstated. I don't think you'll have nearly as many callers tonight as you would have had a week ago or a month ago or two months ago. I know that 80 people were left on hold during the Planning Commission meeting. It was unintentional. It was nobody's fault. It was just a technical mistake. But the community feels that they're not going to be heard. They feel that this uh, that they've been silenced, that the uh, tenacity and persistence of the developer to continue to bring the project forward without support from the community uh, means that they aren't important. I know that that's not true. I know that they are important. I hope that you will support the community and me and city staff by denying the project. And then just a couple last statements in response to things that you heard from the team. It is an auto-centric project. That is undeniable. When you look at it from a bird's eye view, it is largely a parking lot surrounded by gas, two drive-throughs and a strip mall. Tobacco, alcohol, gas, removal of trees, a strip mall and fast food are not responsive to our plans, not responsive to the surrounding community and do not have an eye towards our collective future that we should all be thinking about. You heard the project applicant say that they want this project to truly be the gateway. I don't believe that alcohol, gas, tobacco, fast food and strip mall should ever be a gateway to any portion of Sacramento, much less the beautiful community that lives right by the site. UTI students already do not need to drive away to get food. Directly across the street is the coffee shop and at least six sit-down brick and mortar restaurants that are all frequented by the students at UTI. And they are all within walking distance. And there is already a patio over there that is heavily utilized by the community. I will remind you that denying this particular project to move forward does not preclude this developer from moving forward with a project. The city has already zoned and entitled and approved the site for restaurants, for office and even for gas, though I don't think a project proposal for gas would actually make its way through, given what needs to be done by the applicant. I have however, offered my support for conditional use permit for childcare, which I think would be wildly successful on the site. Many of the images that you were shown today uh, were misleading. They have wider sidewalks than actually exist there or would exist there, wider roads than actually exist or would exist, and far more trees, mature trees than actually exist. And did not note for you the 23 partially mature trees that would be removed. And I would just ask my colleagues this, since when did we place a value on fast food, alcohol and tobacco as good compatible uses next door to a school site? The persistence of the developers is admirable and I would agree, they have changed the facade and some components of the project as we've gone along. But they have definitely not started anew and listened to the community's input as this project has gone forward. It is not the best use of the land and it does not look to our collective future. And I do not think that examples from Elk Grove are relevant for us. And I do not think that the Allegheny project across the freeway, which is not bordered by another Starbucks and not bordered by another gas station, can be held up as a comparable. All of that being said, I look forward to hearing from the community. I hope my colleagues will join me in support of staff's recommendation to deny the project. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I have one foundational question before we start the public testimony that um, I wanna hear upfront from the planning staff. If the council denies this project today, as staff recommends and as Councilmember Ashby has asked, would the applicant be able to go forward and build a gas station without subsequent council approval?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Garrett here. If the project is denied, the applicant would have to request at a minimum a P U D schematic plan amendment to allow for a gas station on parcel three.
That require account, does that require council approval?
Planning Commission approval for that one.
Can that be called up then by the council member if the Planning Commission were to approve that?
Not called up, but it could be appealed.
It could be appealed by a member of the community. So the question, ultimately what you're telling me is the question of a gas station would, if the project, i- i- if the, if this project were denied and the applicant decided to go ahead with the gas station, the, the question would probably end back up before the city council?
Possibly correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, let us hear from the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have 16 callers. May I have the first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, my name is Jansen Tan and I'm a resident of Sundance Lake. This project, Gateway West, is right next to our village. And this is important because frankly, from our backyards, you can throw a ball and it could land into this project. That's how close we are to this project. And I think this is relevant because I think there are going to be a lot of people speaking here today, some of which are probably the developers' friends, um, colleagues. I know this because I sit on the N N C C um, together with Nick and Red, and you know, some of them support this project, but none of them live next to this project. I do. Um, I'm frankly, I'm, I'm all ready to really be upset because you know, last time in the Planning Commission, me and a num, huge number of our neighbors were prevented from speaking because of some quote, "technical glitch" where, unquote, where only those who were proponents for this project were allowed to speak. There were only five people who spoke and through some miraculous coincidence, all five of them were pro this project. But I digress. I'd like to focus on the one issue that really, really matters to me most and what this project ultimately is. This project is ultimately one that would allow Gateway West to sell alcohol and tobacco in our neighborhood, right next to a school. I watch incredulously, incredulously um, as the developer cited the benefits to traffic. You know, hey, the folks from UTI can easily walk over to this development and buy their stuff. That stuff includes alcohol and tobacco. Tobacco and alcohol sales up to 12 a.m. Let that sink in, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, it may mean nothing to you, but remember, this is my neighborhood, my kids, our kids.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, I, I, we are against this project. Well, in the final analysis, this project is about tobacco and alcohol sales right next to a school. A zoning law that prevents us from having
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay, thank you. Hello, I'm a resident of the Sundance Lake community and um, I was super fired up um, before I heard Angelique Ashby's speech. And I've got to say, um, Councilwoman Angelique Ashby, thank you so much for basically voicing everything that I've wanted to say. I just wanna support Angelique Ashby and her proposal or recommendation to deny this project. First of all, this project um, does not meet the master plan of the Natomas community. Um, this was not meant to be a gas, uh, liquor and two fast food restaurant um, community. This is a community where we walk our dogs along Duckhorn and, you know, children walk by along Duckhorn safely without the fear of speeding cars, um, because it's only a two-lane road. And um, that's, that's really what this community is about, to give the picture, to give the mayor a picture of what our community is. Um, we're not an affluent community. We're a community of immigrants, working hard, you know, we, we, but we work hard. Um, we bought a piece of this, this land, it's, you know, on, on by a lake and we're happy with it and it's peaceful and we wanna keep it that way. So I, I really request the, the city council to think about it and um, deny the rezoning of the community. Restaurants, I'm all for it. I'm looking forward if the developer plans to put some restaurants. I do have some recommendations, um, but sale of alcohol, um, sale of tobacco and um, these restaurants are really not supported in the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. My name is Michael McKenna. I live in the Sundance Lake community and we are proud to have Angelique Ashby as our representative. That is important because there will be employees of this crooked developer who live nowhere near this proposed development, who will call in supporting it and saying how great it will be for the area. That is a complete lie. When the developer's representative came out to address our HOA, the entire room was packed overflowing for the first time ever, with all our residents unanimously opposing this rezoning. The developer has the nerve to say that they're hoping to bring as much traffic as possible into our neighborhoods. At times of day, there is gridlock on tiny Duckhorn Road with students from the huge UTI campus going to and from school. This rezoning, zoning would result in complete gridlock all day long. Right now, our children can walk down a safe tree-lined path to our nearby shopping center, which already contains a gas station. However, the developer wants to destroy dozens of beautiful mature trees, wiping out our safe tree-lined walkway and submit it over to widen the road to accommodate all the traffic he hopes to bring onto our already busy street. It will be like our kids will now be tight-ropeing along the side of a busy freeway. Please do not allow that to happen. As a suggestion of Garrett Norman, we send in volumes of emails opposing the rezoning. None of that made None of that made it to the planning commission. We were told we could call in to voice our concerns when they heard this proposal. Over eighty of us waited hours on hold, only to find out that they had taken the vote without one person from our neighborhood being able to speak. Only the developers' paid employees, none of whom live here, were able to speak praise in the project. When a few of us were able to call in after the commissioners voted, they were shocked to hear there was so much neighborhood opposition and asked if they could change their minds now that they knew all the facts. They were told they could not change their votes and should not let the city council know what had happened because it would make them look foolish. We do not need the biggest, brightest gas station in the area with the fifty-foot neon signs shining into our homes. There is another full-service gas station being built right now off the same exit, Nexus Centene. We do not need late-night alcohol and tobacco sales or fast-food restaurants bringing crime, gangs, and-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Thank you. This would destroy the family quiet neighborhood just, just so some slimy developer can dump all the garbage into our neighborhoods. Zoning laws are in place to protect innocent people, but greedy developers. In your hearts, you know this is not right. Please vote to deny this rape of our neighborhood to protect our families. Thank you, and our hearts go out to the family of Councilwoman Ashby.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Flugie, and I've made some notes. Um, I'd like to read those.
Please proceed.
Yes. Okay, this project provides no neighborhood-serving, um, commercial features that will enhance our community. It will, however, significantly increase the traffic on Duckhorn Drive. It will result in increased noise, late-night light intrusion of the residents of Sundance Lake. It will cause a negative impact on the water quality of our lake. It will create hazards for the neighbors that bike and walk in the area. It is going to remove twenty-three pretty well-established trees that will provide shade in the, in the backyards of our homeowners. All of this to draw thousands of cars a day to interstate, interstate, off of Interstate Five. This project only exists will dump a hundred percent of their cars and trucks onto the already congested Duckhorn Drive that prior to COVID-nineteen pandemic backed up several times a day from its intersections off of Arena Boulevard to Goose Haven Court. The entrance to the community, this traffic mess occurs due to all the vehicles leaving UTI. The project will only make the existing problem much worse. All the water runoff from Gateway West Commercial Project will flow into Sundance Lake, which operates on a storm-water detention lake as part of the city of Sacramento's drainage system. Our Neighborhood Association currently and fully is responsible for maintaining the lake and its water quality. The water runoff is, from this project significantly reduces the water quality of the lake, requiring our association and the homeowners to invest greater resources in the lake management.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Please take the staff's recommendation to, um, not approve this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Sorry, I was turning down the, um- Sorry.
You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, hi, this is Red Baines. I, I live in Council One. I'm the past chair of the Planning Commission and president of the North Natomas Community Coalition, speaking tonight as a property owner less than one-half mile from this project. I hear from many in our community about what we are lacking. Number one, Starbucks drive-through coffee is one of the top things I hear for people needing here because we have families raising children and need drive-through service as to not have to get three-point-five kids into a Starbucks and on their way back to childcare and to work. The Burger King drive-through is what our seniors want. I, I have cribbage friends that live in the mobile home park next to Sundance here. And they're looking forward to having a fast-food, um, drive-through that they don't have to get out and they can get to a meal and take it home and still be hot. In COVID times, this makes complete sense. These will be great opportunities for first-time jobs for our young people, too, to start with. We need more eateries. We are growing rapidly with twenty-four-hour businesses all around this place, a new hospital, Centene, and the new distribution center across the street from the project. We need to keep up with our growing workforce needs. This is the perfect place for a gas station, a, a fast-food restaurant, and a Starbucks. It is on a six-lane Arena Boulevard, six lanes, and next to the I-five freeway ramp. There is a four-hundred-and-twenty-five apartment complex going in, less than a half a mile from this, being built across the freeway on East Commerce and more to come. The current drive-through on Del Paso and East Commerce, those drive-throughs are always packed day or night. Please allow our community to grow and don't allow plans we developed over twenty-five years ago to dictate where we need to go today. And it, it, thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Tanya Holland. I'm a resident of the Riverdale North community off of Duckhorn. Uh, first, I'd like to, uh, thank Angelique Ashby for her comments. I echo her concerns. I also echo the concerns of my neighbors who spoke previously about, um, concerns about noise and environmental pollution and congestion. Um, I would suggest that if this project has been redesigned ten times and still offers nothing of interest to this community, that maybe this developer is not for us. Um, if they are interested in building something for highway commercial use, as they put it, that would be a project better suited to areas a little farther north on I-five, um, back towards the airport. So my understanding is that Natomas was always planned and designed from the very beginning to be a family-friendly neighborhood. And a lot has been done to that effort, including, you know, the, the homes that we have that are accommodating to families, the baseball park we have, the incoming swim center, the schools. This is a neighborhood where this project is designed specifically where kids, um, walk and bike to school, where kids walk and bike to the grocery store. Um, this is not a family-friendly project. This is not how we bill and sell Natomas. This is not how we keep our property values up. This is not what, what makes us a place where people want to live, especially with Centene coming. They're going to want a family-friendly neighborhood. And this sixteen-part gas station is really not the way to do it. But the other thing I would really like to speak to is this concept of alcohol density. And I'm sure that many people, um, on the council and you, Mayor Steinberg, are already familiar with this concept. But areas with increased alcohol density studies show have higher rates of poverty, disorderly conduct, and violence. And I know for a fact that other areas of Sacramento have already dealt with this issue. I do not think that selling alcohol outside of the grocery store-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
That we already have outside of our grocery stores is necessary or good for our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Denise Ross-Frankham. I'm a District One resident and Realtor. It's been my experience that when people buy a home near undeveloped land, they are always unhappy when someone proposes developing it. It's my understanding this development will have a drive-through Starbucks, a restaurant, retail, and a gas station. That sounds like services and amenities that would serve local residents. This property is already zoned and approved for employment center, which would certainly mean more traffic, that's office buildings. The developer could move ahead with that plan without any further meetings or changes. Centene will soon be full of employees, and all of those people will want access to nearby gas stations and restaurants. I know Centene is planning to have a very nice cafeteria. But if you've ever worked in an office building, you know, sometimes you just want to get out of that building. One of the comments I heard at the previous meeting was that the students from AutoTech School create traffic backups when they drive to and from lunch. If there are restaurants in this new development next door, some of them might actually walk to lunch. The aisle-one gas station in the Bel Air Shopping Center is frequently full and backed up all the way to the street. The area clearly needs another gas station. I understand that's nobody's idea of an ideal neighbor, but they'll be in the back portion of the property. Someone in a previous meeting mentioned a concern about fumes coming into their homes from the new gas station. Has anyone complained about that from aisle one? Because it's right across the street. It's my understanding that the products planned for this development are of a higher quality than what is required by this. They'll be spending approximately fifteen percent more, fifteen percent more than necessary. This should mean that we'll end up with a most disgusting building, which I would be glad to hear because some of the commercials in Natomas aren't that attractive. Lastly, I feel concerned about alcohol and cigarette sales at the gas station because there are children in the neighborhood. That is ridiculous. There are children in every neighborhood in Natomas, except probably Heritage Park.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Thank you. Bel Air sells alcohol and children can't buy it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. As twenty-year residents of North Natomas, we oppose the Gateway West rezon. Development projects in our community have already impacted our lives. One of those developments is a massive thirteen-hundred-student technical school that was built directly across the street from our homes on Duckhorn Road just a few years ago. Although we've learned to live side-by-side with students, we must still deal with bumper-to-bumper traffic surges that cripple Duckhorn Road four times each day. I mention this because tonight you're hearing about a second development that will soon begin construction adjacent to that school. When the Gateway Development was first introduced to our community a few years ago, artistic renderings presented a village environment for casual dining and outdoor spaces for family and friends to gather. So you can imagine our shock when we discovered that the developer replaced the village concept with a rezon plan that not only included a commercial property and hotel, but also included two drive-through services, a seventy-foot-high freeway sign, and a twenty-four-hour, sixteen-nozzle auto-refueling depot and car wash, the largest in the region. Notably, more nozzles than existed at the Forty-Niner Truck Stop just a few miles away. The new purpose of the Gateway West Development is to attract and serve motorists passing through this tiny corner lot at Arena and Duckhorn. In their haste to proceed with the rezon, the developer's plan to address traffic is to carve up the landscape on both sides of Duckhorn Road to make way for a massive concrete roundabout. The roundabout would require the leveling of trees and the existing landscape directly behind our back road fences. The intent of the roundabout was to get motorists back to the freeway, but it completely ignores the fact that Duckhorn is a family-friendly, tree-lined road that for years has been used by neighbors for taking walks and riding bikes. For those of us who live in the direct path of this proposed commercial drive-through project, we believe that there is a certainty of pollutants, trash, vagrancy, and unmitigated traffic flowing twenty-four hours a day. In closing, please honor the master plan for North Natomas and recognize the impact that this overzealous rezon would have on families and homeowners who've invested in this community. We ask you to join city planners by voting no on this application to rezon. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council, I am Mike Wiley, president of the Board of Directors for the Sundance Lake Owners Association and a twenty-year resident of our community. The Board of Directors, representing two-hundred-and-forty-three homes directly adjacent to the proposed development, unanimously urges you to reject the proposed Gateway West Commercial Project. Gateway West Commercial Project is completely inconsistent with North Natomas' community plan and its vision for our community. The project with a sixteen-nozzle gas station, larger than any for miles around, a car wash, and two fast-food drive-through restaurants is designed to be a magnet to attract cars and trucks off of Interstate Five. This project provides no neighborhood-serving commercial features that will enhance our community. It will, however, significantly increase traffic on Duckhorn. It will result in increased noise and late-night light intrusion for our residents. It will cause a negative impact on the water quality of our lake. It will create hazards for our neighbors that bike and walk in the area. And it will remove twenty-three well-established trees that provide shade to the backyards of our homes. All of this to draw thousands of cars a day off of Interstate Five. Everything about the Gateway West project is negative. It is a project whose sole purpose is designed to attract thousands of cars and trucks off the freeway. It is a totally auto-oriented development with a sixteen-nozzle gas station and two drive-through fast-food restaurants. It is completely inconsistent with all of your adopted plans for North Natomas. It only creates severe negative impacts in our community and includes nothing that will positively impact the quality of lives for the residents of our neighborhood. I urge you to unanimously reject the Gateway West Commercial Project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay, good evening, um, council members and Mayor Steinberg. My name is Chris Paris, and I live in District One. I'm a twenty-plus-year resident of Natomas and, um, former president of the North Natomas Community Coalition and a current member. I also included a letter on page sixty-eight of staff's report. Uh, I do support staff's denial of the project, even like the neighborhood's commercial parts of the project, and I do appreciate the applicant's efforts in trying to build a good project. I really do regret that we could not find a way to get a win-win out of it because initially, back in twenty-seventeen, when we reviewed the project in our NNCC meeting, I had an open mind, and I hoped we could find a win-win. But the, the local neighbors were definitely, back then, opposed to the gas station and had continued to be opposed, even though there were some efforts to look at whether we could move it around or not. Um, but the more, over time, I was hoping we could find a win-win, but over time, the more I looked at the intersection and I looked at the local area, and I tried to envision a future with the cars queued up at a second eight-pump gas station and these drive-throughs going in and out of one road on Duckhorn at an already very, very busy intersection, the more I realized that these highway commercial uses just will not fit on this small, less-than-four-acre site. No matter what you do to mitigate the traffic, these uses will just forever change this neighborhood into a car-oriented traffic mess. It would just undermine any hope also of creating the pedestrian village that our North Natomas community plan envisioned for this area, pedestrian-focused village. And we're looking into the future of having four-hundred-plus apartments built just south on Duckhorn.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
May I request thirty-plus seconds, please?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so the bottom line is the, these don't fit in this, and what good is a community plan?
Thank you for your comments. Please make your final comment.
Yeah, and I will-
Thank you. Let's move to the next caller, Mindy.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Mayor Steinberg and council members, my name is Monique Blulenger. I call in tonight as your constituent, as a Natomas resident, respectfully urging a no vote on this proposed rezon. As you all well know, the residents of Natomas have nothing if not unending patience, and we have been accommodating at times to our own detriment. We are in favor of smart growth and thoughtful development. However, this proposed rezon is an unnecessary change to the workable plan in place for this parcel and is deserving of the criticism it faces from the community. I echo the concerns of my neighbors and Councilmember Ashby regarding the unnecessary drive-throughs and promised businesses that may never materialize. There are nine other underutilized hotels less than two miles within this proposal, including one on the very same Duckhorn Drive. This is not a thoughtful use. The pollution increased by the proposed idling cars will only be compounded by the removal of the tree, the few mature trees our community has. These trees double as a vital sound barrier to the community to speed away from the proposed roundabout. This new roundabout is intended to meet the bare minimum of concerns from nearby neighbors. It doesn't cut it. The two-lane street that this large project will exit onto was not made to accommodate this amount of traffic. The residents of the apartment complexes and housing developments that are forced to use this street would be competing with those unfamiliar here, prompting serious safety concerns at an already precarious intersection. The children, including four sons of my own, elderly neighbors, including my parents, and families who desire a walkable neighborhood, will be without one. Without fail, our small community streets will also be forced to accommodate heavy additional traffic from confused drivers. At the planning commission meeting in September, residents' voices were not heard, despite hours spent on hold, while the applicants' representatives spoke for hours and were ultimately successful in persuading commission members. I am proud to say I was born and raised in Sacramento, and I'm proud of the progress we have made. This is the first time I have felt compelled to speak out. In addition to hearing from the applicants, please ensure you hear the voices of your constituents and consider the future of Sacramento before imposing unnecessary development on hard-working local residents. I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor and City Council. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak with you guys tonight. My name is Dan Hyman. I live in the Sundance Lake community right across the street from this proposed project. I was actually one of the many individuals who didn't get a chance to speak during the planning and design meeting a while back. And as you've heard, a small number of us, we didn't get through, or we didn't get through, but a small number of people did that supported the project. What struck me very odd is that each one of them said the exact same thing in short, precise, almost verbatim words, without any emotion or passion around the topic. And if you compare this with the opposition who finally got through, it was very striking. First, one of the main things that was said by the people who did get through was that we need another gas station on the corner of Duckhorn and Arena. I have lived here for over thirteen years, and not once have I had to wait in line for gas at Bel Air, which is right across the street. Not one time. Yeah, it's been busy, and there's been times where, I mean, I've seen long lines at Costco gas stations, but I've never in thirteen years been seen lines there or been inconvenienced in any significant way by trying to get gas right where we get it across the street. The other reason I found the call striking is that our local HOA, which you've heard, we've had meetings in regards to this project. Every single meeting that I attended, I think there was three, was standing room only, and every single person there was adamantly opposed to this project. In the few years this project has been discussed, I've never met one person in the community here in our surrounding neighborhood that supports it. Not one single person. But just to sum up quickly, I personally think one of the reasons this proposal's drugged out, been dragged out for so long is the actual citizens here locally, the people that are going to be impacted, they do not want a gas station centered on this.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes. To sum up, once again, I don't think anyone here in the Natomas community supports this project, does not meet the goals of the Natomas neighborhood community.
Thank you for your comments.
Please do not allow this project to move forward. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak, and thank you, Angela Gassberg.
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Jennifer Snell, and I'm a resident of District One. And my concerns are primarily about the alcohol use and to build on one of our previous callers, the relationship between high-density alcohol establishments and violent crime in the area. Multiple research studies have linked single-use alcohol sales for off-premise consumption with increased rates of violent crime, including youth homicide and domestic violence. Furthermore, the density of drive-throughs has also been correlated with an increase in pedestrian accidents. So for a neighborhood that's really focused on being safe and pedestrian-friendly, these do not fit with the ideals of North Natomas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, council. My name is John Tucker. I live closest development in the Sundance Lake community. I feel like this project is a vital project in growing our community, and I've heard multiple different callers now say that the Iowa One takeoff has never been busy. This is very not true. Even today, I was waiting thirteen minutes just to get gas. The sixteen, uh, sixteen-pump gas tank is a big move for the future, and also the Universal Technical Institute. I live, I'm neighboring with some students, and the Starbucks and the Burger King, these are study places. If we want to look to the future, we need to look towards the younger generation, give them better places to study, better places not, rather than having to go all the way across the street where they have to go to the Bel Air. And people are saying alcohol, alcohol, alcohol. I'm hearing that consistently. Alcohol is also sold at the Bel Air. It's also sold at the gas station all the way across the highway. Alcohol is not going to be a problem if it's monitored and controlled in a fashionable way that it's only sold to people above twenty-one and in a reasonable manner. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Mayor, City Council, I'm a resident near this project. I am calling to ask that you deny the request to rezone the employment center land. I hope that you have had the time to read through the abundance of comment letters from those of us opposed to this project, and therefore I won't rehash the reasons to deny it. As you know by now, no one opposed to this project was allowed to speak at that Planning Commission meeting. I fully believe the vote would have been different absent the technical difficulties of the meeting. I ask that you look at this project on its face. This is not a request to build a Starbucks. In fact, it was quite interesting to hear tonight that Starbucks says a ten-year lease across the street, cementing community concerns that Starbucks is merely a shiny lure put on elevation. This is a request to rezone land for uses that are currently not allowed and are opposed by the community. The subject parcel is small and oddly shaped. Its shape prevents egress back to Arena Boulevard. Absent an exit to Arena, any traffic-centered use will simply not work on the subject parcel. I've been told that this developer also owns the vacant land on the southeast corner of the same intersection. That parcel's significantly larger, located further from residential, and would probably allow for better egress for traffic-intensive uses like those the developers proposing for this tiny parcel. I see no reason why the small parcel on the northeast corner was chosen to propose such a massive car-centered development when they could have proposed it on the larger parcel across the street. The mayor asked if this was being decided tonight was whether or not to allow a gas station, as a future gas station proposal could end up back at City Council. I don't believe this is the case. The opposition to this project is not just about a gas station. It is about a basket full of car-centric usage, uses crammed into a very tight parcel with a single exit onto a very small residential street. If a gas station is needed as the area grows and allowed by zoning, the developer should propose it for their parcel across the street, away from residential, and with better egress. Lastly, the developer says city staff changed their minds. To hold firmly city staff to any opinion offered prior to public comment seeks to eliminate the public comment process entirely.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes. I would like to see the subject parcel developed, and I wish the developer could have worked with the community to come up with something that works. This is just not it, and I hope that you deny the rezon. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Eric Langer. I'm a resident of Sundance Lake, the nearby community. I appreciate the time to be able to express my strong opposition to the rezoning. My concern is one of safety that's going to be caused by the excess traffic. I'd just like to highlight that there is one ingress and egress point proposed by this development. As a comparison, the Bel Air parcel across the way that has a similar amount of traffic has six. And as some people have pointed out, there's a lot of traffic and sometimes safety issues just with that, and there are six ingress-egress points. So this proposal is proposing that we would bring in similar traffic off of a freeway and put it onto a two-lane highway or two-lane road with only one ingress and egress point that already gets backed up by the local school four times a day. I honestly just don't understand how this is not a safety concern waiting to happen. I have four kids in the area, and literally, we would not be able to let them go to the store or do anything outside near that street anymore. I think it's a danger to the neighborhood, and I just don't understand how we would even consider bringing in that much additional traffic with only one ingress and egress point. It's beyond me. Thank you for the time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, thank you. My name is Rosie. I am a local resident nearby to where the Gateway Common and Secure Project is being proposed. I am a few blocks away. I am in support of this project. I am a mother of three very, very young children, and I have to travel clear across town just to be able to even obtain a meal with my kids and have access to a drive-through. So something like this project with a drive-through and the option of having the ability to pull up somewhere with three minor children without having to haul them all out of car seats would be great to have something local and nearby to us. So I am in support of this project.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay. Hello, my name is Karmine Tucker, and I live in Natomas near the proposed site of this project. I strongly believe we need this center. The gas station and the drive-through coffee is a must. It is extremely convenient and will help a lot of working parents. So in conclusion, I strongly support this project.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Angela Kellogg. I am a, like, I think I've been here twelve years, a resident of Natomas, and I actually live closer to Del Paso, so I am at the opposite end of this project, but I am also on Duckhorn. And I have heard quite a bit of comment this evening regarding the traffic that will be happening at Duckhorn and Arena, but I want to be sure that the mayor and council is well aware that this will not only impact that one intersection, but also at Duckhorn off of El Centro and Del Paso. We get so much traffic from this school and from UTI and people that cannot get out onto Arena and come racing up Duckhorn to come out on El Centro. There's only the two exit points off of Duckhorn, and the traffic and the danger that will happen because of the increased amount of traffic, if that, if this project is allowed to continue with drive-throughs and a gas station with only one entry point, is going to impact all of the communities, all of the neighborhoods with, off of Duckhorn. We already have one hotel. I don't really see a problem with an additional hotel, but I know there's already an additional hotel that's been approved onto Duckhorn and just hasn't been built yet, and there's all the businesses. I don't have a problem with sit-down restaurants. I don't even have a problem with a hotel. I have a huge problem with drive-throughs and a gas station coming through onto a tiny two-lane road, and the roundabout is not going to fix anything. I sit in line on that road as it is now and have been for years, and where the roundabout is, is the traffic backs up way past that, so it is pointless to have a roundabout in the location that it is. It's not going to help the traffic. It's going to create confusion and make a bad situation even worse.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Adding this to that location is dangerous for all of the neighborhoods that are entirely along Duckhorn and the entire Del Paso and Arena area of the community, and we do not want it.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is Sonny Guy, the Burger King franchisee in Sacramento. Just wanted to get clear of some misconceptions. Whether I get to build here or not, it does not mentor, matter at this point, but I do want to let you know that people have to come to grips with the fact that we, the drive-through owners, kept this country going for the last nine months, feeding first responders that have this town free food, getting food during the fires into fire stations. Why are we considered like trash? And I can tell you today, if this was a Chick-fil-A, everybody would be voting yes for it. To get some more misconceptions out, it is not true that Starbucks doesn't go across Starbucks because there's a Chevron on the other side. There will be no Chevron. I can point out multiple places today where Starbucks is making deals to go into drive-throughs because that is the future. You will be buying groceries at drive-throughs in the near future. Who wants sit-down restaurants? Your sit-down restaurants are gone. Do you realize that? Chipotle was a sit-down restaurant. It doesn't open without the Chipotle now. Panera was a sit-down restaurant. It doesn't open without drive-throughs now. And I spent five million dollars down the drain in this city and in Angelique's area with Corner Bakery that did not work. I have a Blaze Pizza that cost me one-point-two-million dollars that I'm going to close on thirty-first of December in El Grove. Why? Because drive-throughs are the way to go. We have bought sustainability. We were the first ones to have the Impossible Whopper. Did anybody realize that? Today, there's a Popeye's with chicken. Everybody lines up two hours to get it. Today, there is a Chick-fil-A or In-N-Out. People will come there. People keep screaming about alcohol. Come on, you live in a state where you voted for cannabis to be delivered to my house. I can order and I can show an ID through my glass window, and the guy will leave cannabis on my doorstep. I can order cocktails to go today. What are we talking about? Field bottles here?
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
My thing is that this thing, we need to change our perception. We can't build childcare and keep paying the bills for it.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, council members. I live in the Westshore Development for the last eleven years. And firstly, I want to thank Councilmember Ashby for all her hard work and certainly like to offer my condolences for the passing of her father. These last two weeks were extremely difficult for her, so we really appreciate all the work that she's doing for our district. Like I said, I live in the Westshore Development, very close to this project. I drive on Arena every morning to and from work, and I would like to submit my support for this project. I've watched my neighborhood basically grow exponentially. We have the Centene project that's coming close to us. I expect nothing but housing development and high-density housing to be very close to us. So a commercial amenity such as this is absolutely necessary. I disagree with some of the callers. I think Bel Air is extremely difficult to get into. The gas station is very difficult to get into. It's literally a traffic jam, so another gas station is absolutely necessary, along with a drive-through option for my kids. And I do feel this project is necessary for our community, and I ask the members to fully support this project. And one last point, this last time we were calling in, I don't want my neighbors to think that they were the only ones that were on hold. I, being in support of this project, was also placed on hold for a very long time and didn't have a chance to speak. So I want the council members to know that it's not just the people that were opposed to this project, but there are a lot of people that were in support of this project that did not have the opportunity to speak. So I respectfully ask all council members to...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I thank, I thank my neighbors for their comments, and again, we ask for the council members' support to approve this matter.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello?
Please make your comments.
Hi there. Hi. My name is Gary Dillon. I've been a resident of this community neighborhood over here about fifteen years. I've seen that Bel Air Shopping Center go up, and I've seen the amount of, uh, community grow, and that shopping center seems to get more congested every year. And I think there'd be a great option for some more selection and more business to open up around the area. So I'm in full support of this project with, if there's a selection of drive-throughs coming in or other businesses that are family-friendly as well. I think that'd be a great option for our community.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay, thank you. Hello, my name's Derek, and I live in Natomas, and I support this project. It'd be nice to have another coffee shop, and the gas station will help ease up congestion from across the street. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, good evening. My name is Emmanuel Amanfor. I am a member of the Civil Service Commission Board. As a resident of Sacramento and a public health practitioner, I do not think that this project is taking into account the long-term health effects of its residents. Living in Third District, I see... Living in the third district, I see gas stations and many of these health risk businesses in my community. The residents in this area come from low socioeconomic status and are already predisposed to chronic disease that are exacerbated by these type of businesses. Gas stations near residents have contributed to asthma and other respiratory diseases. We also know the effects of fast food towards people. The future, as Ashby eloquently described, should not include an increase of such businesses. My concern is that if this project is not approved, I worry that such project would be referred to my district. It's time for us to begin thinking about our future, especially our health. Not only do I not support this project, but I hope we can work carefully in reducing such businesses in communities affecting residents, especially those who come from low socioeconomic status like mine. This pandemic, this pandemic is a learning opportunity where we should begin to think critically about the public health of all Sacramento residents. Thank you again.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello to everybody who's over listening to me tonight. So I'm the resident of Natomas and I live near to the area where this project is going to be started. And I think this project is one of the good projects that should be done in Natomas. As of now, the population of Natomas is booming too much. So I think we need gas station, a coffee shop there. That'd be a great idea for this project to be done there. And I think there'd be a great project for our community. As of now, our community needs more gas station, coffee shops, stores, because the population has been rising in Natomas. A lot of people are moving to Natomas. And for me and my family, having a gas station that close to my house, not too congested, and I can easily go in and out, that'd be so great for me. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Mayor, we're just calling in to say, you know, we live in, in Natomas County and, and, and in the area. We worked there as well. We think it's a really good project for the neighborhood. I, I don't want to give a big old speech, but I think it's a really good project. We should be continued.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I just wanted to voice my support for this project. I think what a lot of callers that have dialed in are missing is that, you know, we, we have a, 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 a community that's growing here. And, and, you know, we, we see this community and, and, and we see the amenities that are lacking, severely lacking in and around our, our neighborhood. You know, simple things as, as just pumping gas or a drive-through to, where we don't have to take our kids out of the car, out of the vehicle. We can just drive through, pick up what we need and, and be on our way to work or dropping our kids off at school. It, it's, it's really become a challenge, right? When you have to do that where, where you don't have the drive-throughs, where you don't have the simple amenities that very, you know, up-and-coming progressive neighborhoods have and, and we're lacking that in Natomas. And I think it's a lot of short-sightedness on our part where we need to think about these things and think about the youth and the young folks in our, in our neighborhoods and, and how they, you know, are, are going to be conducting, you know, you know, going into work. You know, think about the way that they, that, the way that they do things, right? Not that, not necessarily the old way of doing things, right? We see it today. We see it where, where, you know, food delivery services are booming, you know, Uber, Lyft, you know, I mean, we have to start thinking more progressively in our communities. Where we can't be short-sighted. We can't be narrow-minded. We have to, you know, think big, right? We want more businesses to come. We want more, more, more larger corporations to come. We want more jobs created in our, in our community. Right? I mean, we're missing a hospital, right? We need these, these amenities in our community. You know, once the big jobs, the big corporations come, they expect that. They want that in these communities. So we can't, we can't be that narrow-minded where we're, we're, you know, we're pushing against everything that's making our, our community grow. We have to be on support, in support of this, of this project and every other project that's bringing in additional jobs to our community. So I just urge all.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I, I, I urge the council members and the mayor to please think of, of the goodness that this project will bring and just.
Thank you for your comments.
Overall. Thank you.
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. My name is Crystal Blue. Good evening. I am a District One resident and a resident of the Westlake community. And I would like to say I am seriously opposed to this Gateway West rezone. I won't waste so much of your time repeating the concerns of my neighbors and council member Ashby, but I will say that this project is a safety and a really bad direction for Natomas and Sacramento. Thank you for your consideration and your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers.
Okay, thank you very much to the members of the public who took the time to weigh in today. It's very, very important and valuable. Let us now turn it over to the City Council. Madam Clerk, can you help me please in terms of the members?
Mayor, if I could quick.
Oh, yes. You wanted, you, you wanted to go next, of course.
Yeah, is that okay? I just, yeah, I'll, this, just very briefly, first of all, thank you to my constituents for calling in in favor and in support and, and opposing and, and with concerns and questions. As always, I'm extremely proud to represent District One. It's full of tremendous people who really care about their community. I heard some new voices on the phone today that I have not heard engaged in the past, but I also heard some many, many, many longstanding voices. I heard a PTA president in there and you heard the Neighborhood Association president, who's not unfamiliar to any of you. It's Mike Wiley, who previously ran the Sacramento Regional Transit Association, who's leading the community opposition of this project. The folks who have been very engaged and who live nearby are opposed. This is not a close call. It's not controversial in the community. It is absolutely not supported by the community. It is not a forward-thinking project. This isn't about thinking big. This isn't about Centene. This isn't about, you know, progress. It is a Starbucks and a gas station being proposed across the street from a Starbucks and a gas station, which is exactly why our cities recommend, our city staff recommendation is to deny. It's not controversial because city staff has declared it not essential and not compelling. The community has a reasonable expectation that we will uphold the general plan and the community plan, unless we have a compelling reason to do so, to change it, to do something different. Gas, alcohol, tobacco, fast food, strip malls, removing trees, those are not compelling reasons and they are not progressive nor forward-thinking. The only one truly in favor of this project is the developer themselves and their supporters, their, their friends and family. And I would ask my colleagues to please support the community, to please support city staff and to please support me. With that, I would like to make a motion, Mayor. I'd like to close the public hearing, move staff's recommendation, which is to deny the project, and ask my colleagues, please, for their support of my motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second now in the motion or do the members want to first weigh in? All right, let me.
And the following members signed up to speak. Harris, Warren, and then Carr.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. New Angelique and council members, we have found that land use decisions are some of the hardest to deal with. I recall that when I was running for council, McKinley Village was in play intensely controversial and it was all about housing. It wasn't about gas stations. It wasn't about fast food. And yet, the community immediately adjacent thought that it was going to end life in East Sacramento as we know it, that it would be extremely deleterious to the community. You know, perception is one thing and I have found with many development projects, excuse me, that reality can sometimes be quite different. Now, in this situation, fast food and gas stations are certainly not my favorite uses. They are car-centric and that is not really the vision of where the city is moving. However, as we move into electrification of automobiles and as we've moved through this pandemic, it is true that drive-throughs have actually served the community quite well in many ways. Certainly, drive-through coffee has become extremely popular through the pandemic, as well as food vendors too. So I, I have a few questions for the project proponents. And Nick Abdis, you can answer these perhaps, or your, your colleagues there, you know, the developer, whoever. But look, I, I have a real heartache with tobacco sales. And, you know, we, we worked hard on the tobacco ordinance in the city to prohibit those kind of uses. There are tobacco sales within 1,000 feet of this project. Is the project proponent willing to let go of the tobacco CUP?
Uh, council member Harris, thank you for that, for that question. And certainly, we understand the controversial nature of, of the tobacco subject. And we are correct, you are correct. We're currently, the gas station is within 1,000 feet of, of tobacco sales that occurs at the Bel Air gas station. So we currently would be precluded from, from selling tobacco. We had included it as an add-on entitlement and we would be willing to eliminate the request for tobacco sales as part of any project approval.
So to me, that, that is significant. You know, when, when I approach projects like this, I think about, okay, if it's not immediately attractive to the bulk of the people, what can be adjusted? Is there a way to adjust or comp, you know, make a compromise around the proposal where the uses would be compatible with the plan and so forth? You know, the community plan, called this an employment center in 1994 and the land is sat vacant for 26 years. Maybe that was not the correct designation. It is adjacent to freeway. You know, I'm, I'm a big proponent of electric vehicles and I'm not a big proponent of regional fueling stations. I feel that we need to move away from gasoline as soon as possible, certainly to meet, meet our climate goals. And a 16-pump fueling station, to me, is like a regional fueling station. It's like a Costco. It's like wholesale gas. Have you considered throttling back on the number of pumps? Would you consider going from eight pumps or 16 nozzles to six pumps and 12 nozzles and maybe put in two electric fueling stations? You know, so a couple of Level 2 chargers in lieu of a couple of pumps.
So before I answer that, I, I want to say thanks again for, for that question. You know, this application has been in the pipeline for over three years, as we've heard in excruciating detail. I welcome the opportunity to talk about these issues. We have engaged before and it's sort of a give and take, but I'll be honest, it felt like an exercise and bring me a different rock. And so I thank you for the opportunity to do that. I mean, certainly, we are willing to discuss reducing the number of pumps. With regards to the Level 2 chargers, I think that's something we can take under consideration. I'm going to need to talk to my clients that are here in the room, but I'd say that at least in terms of the reduction of the pumps, we are willing to entertain that. I would also note that we are providing infrastructure for electric vehicle chargers. At last count, I think we're close to 20 for the project site. So we are providing above and beyond what's currently required by code in terms of electrical vehicle charging opportunities on, on the site.
Okay, you know, Nick, I appreciate that. As far as alcohol goes, you and I personally discussed this. I am not a proponent of selling hard liquor at, at gas stations. Are you looking for a CUP to sell singles? Are you looking for hard liquor? Would you be okay with the restriction to do beer and wine only and no off-site singles?
Yes, that is something we, we have discussed, Mr. Vice Mayor, and I think you would also appreciate that, that, yes, that is something that we're willing to do, unlike the gas station that was approved by the city recently that has a full tobacco selection and hard alcohol sales. We are willing to limit the sale of alcohol to beer and wine and no singles.
And, you know, lastly, about the Burger King and drive-through restaurants generally, you know, fast food is certainly not the most nutritious food that people can access. And yet, during COVID, I'd have to say that drive-throughs have really helped a lot of families in, in a lot of ways. You know, this is a temporary condition with the virus pandemic, but, you know, a lot of people have a very negative feeling about drive-through restaurants, that they are attractive to, you know, bad behaviors, nuisance, things like that. It seems like the community up there is pretty amenable to a, a coffee shop. And I know that several community, uh, community members have approached me and said, well, why not a sit-down restaurant? Why, why drive-through? You know, why not something that's a little bit more community-centric? And, you know, I, I ponder that idea. Obviously, during COVID, building a sit-down restaurant is not going to work. We're closing restaurants all over the city currently because of the pandemic. Some of our best restaurateurs are under tremendous stress currently to try to keep their business models afloat. It doesn't seem like a great time to build a sit-down restaurant, but, you know, do you or the project proponents, you know, have a particular attachment to the Burger King? Is Burger King, is it necessary to make enough money to make this project fly? Or are you kind of soft on, on the, the drive-through restaurant idea?
I think we, we need to have, I think we're open to the discussion, but in terms of drive-through with the gas station, if that is to be, we need to have a Burger King there. And if I may touch on the questions that have been raised regarding this Starbucks. Starbucks, we have letters of intent for both the Starbucks and for the Chevron. And that is the most you can get from an interested party without having land use entitlements. And so we, we do have those letters of intent from Starbucks as well as Chevron and are willing to furthermore, I mean, I did hear the concern that there was a bait and switch with the Starbucks. I, I would consider offering as well as, as additional assurance that there will be a drive-through coffee shop there, either a development agreement, amendment, or a use permit condition, something to be determined in terms of the proper mechanism to assure that that is in fact what is going to go into that corner spot. So we just threw that out as well since we're talking here.
So have you done a traffic study on, on this proposal?
Yes, so the city conducted a traffic analysis. It's not before you because the staff did not recommend approval. There, there is an entire dendum to a previous environmental document that was prepared, including a significant extensive traffic analysis prepared by the city's consultant BKS and your Public Works can speak more to that. I would say the conclusion of that document, which is not before you, but would, if you directed staff to bring it back, would show you that there is no subject matter area that is a subject of SEQA in which any threshold of significance is exceeded, and that includes traffic. No applicable standard or metric is exceeded.
Was that a level of service survey or a VNT survey?
It was an LOS, LOS survey. Because we, we, this project application has been in the pipeline for, you know, over three years.
Understood. So that's now obsolete, but nonetheless indicates of, you know, what the traffic might, might become. What about a tree mitigation plan?
So we have, we have our landscape architect, Steve Furman, who's on, on the line of the lead. In terms of, I want to be clear, and I think I mentioned this during my presentation, yes, there are trees that are coming out as part of our proposal. We worked with the Public Works staff to determine what the proper, proper exit configuration would be, whether that be in the form of a traffic circle or a signalized intersection. We chose a traffic signal because it does provide a net benefit to traffic flow. We chose a traffic signal because it does provide a net benefit to traffic flow. Both the intersection, a signalized intersection, and the traffic circle take out trees. There is no project scenario, even under the existing entitlements, that wouldn't necessitate the taking out of trees.
So I asked about a tree mitigation plan. How many diameter inches would you be losing and what would you be mitigating for? Are any of the trees either public or private protected trees that need to be mitigated for?
These trees are all in the public right-of-way. I ask, Steve Furman, are you on?
Okay, how much farther do you have to go, Mr. Vice Mayor? We got a long, long evening here. And I, you know, I know that this is an open forum and all, but it's the Planning Commission, I think, to get into a lot of these kinds of details. I just wanna kind of...
Well, let me just get through a tree mitigation, and then I'll wind it up.
Okay, thank you.
Nick, I am on the line.
Okay, can you address the Vice Mayor's question, please, on the tree mitigation?
Yes, Vice Mayor Jeff Harris. Steve Furman, we are removing trees, as Nick said, in the right-of-way to a total of 177 inches removed. We are replanting the trees that we can within the right-of-way to augment what we've lost, but we still have a net 146 inches that we cannot take credit for. So we will bank or pay a fee credit of $47,450 to the Tree Foundation.
Okay, thank you all. So, you know, my opinion about this project, like most projects, is that they can be made better with public input and sometimes with council input. You know, at first glance, I, there are people in the community who are opposed, certainly, and people who are not opposed. What I hear from the community is that they would like some relief from the congestion at the Bel Air gas station, that some of these uses are supportive to the community. I don't think that a hotel would be built anytime soon. I don't think a sit-down restaurant would be built anytime soon. But this land has been vacant for an awfully long time. Considering the adjustments that the developer is willing to make, I think that this could turn into a reasonable project for the neighborhood. Some of the complaints from the detractors have incongruities. But, you know, I find that people are very resistant to change generally when a vacant lot is built up near to a residential neighborhood. People have kind of fearful reactions to that, often not borne out in my experience, as I found with McKinley Village. So I'm going to think about this a little bit longer. But at this point, Angelique, with all due respect, you know, I supported you ably on the Aquatic Center, but this one does not rise to that level, and I'm not sure that I'm gonna support you on this one. I'm certainly not gonna second your motion.
Okay, Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Boy, it's a lot of information, a lot of community input. You know, as a 30-plus-year real estate developer, I have somewhat of a unique perspective in knowing how difficult it is to develop urban infill projects because typically, urban infill projects receive a lot of attention from existing neighbors and property owners, and which is why a lot of people, a lot of developers, like to push out into greenfields where they don't have as much eyes on what they're doing and community input. And so I say all that to say, you know, this is a unique time. It is a very challenging time. I think some of the points that Mayor Pro-Tim Ashby made are spot-on. And then to hear Vice Mayor Harris and his points, I think were really also clarifying points in that during this pandemic, if you didn't have a drive-through, there's basically, you know, you're handcuffed. You could not make it. You know, I think all the reports in restaurants are saying that over 40%, maybe as much as 50% or more of existing restaurants are going to go out of business. And so if you do not have alternative means of servicing people, you're not gonna make it. In addition to that, we're gonna be faced with falling tax revenues in all of these jurisdictions. And so trying to create investment opportunities and taxes, I think, are gonna be very important. I am, right now, on the fence. I mean, I want to hear more from my colleagues, but, you know, I think this project has merits. It has challenges. It's not unlike a lot of other urban projects. I think the zoning that exists has already anticipated some of these concerns that we've heard from local residences and traffic and whatnot. I think things like VMT, which is vehicle mile travel for a lot of people who may not know what that is, is the new standard by which SEQA is monitoring traffic issues and then offering mitigation options for developers and communities. It's happening throughout the state of California. It's a new standard. And so, you know, I, you know, I mean, my natural inclination would be to, with the modifications I've heard the applicant make to approve, to vote to approve, but also, you know, I know how hard Angelique fights for her community. I know there are a lot of people that have chimed in on this proposal, and so, and I think she's made some very valid points as well. And so I want to hear the rest of my colleagues, and then I will take that under deliberation and then cast my vote. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, Councilmember Warren. Councilmember Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Councilmember Ashby on her presentation. I don't want to congratulate her on her community. They came out to fight for what they believe in. I have not talked to you in several weeks because this is coming up, and I didn't want to get accused of violating any confidences. I didn't even know that your father had passed. So I offer my condolences, had I known that, I would have called you. The community spoke so logically and it was very compelling to me. And what came to my mind is that not all communities are so blessed with people who can speak in such an articulate way and people of some clout. So on a community like that, it's much easier to force an undesirable project on an undisturbed community. So I would like the council members to consider that as they move forward, that it's easy to do if the community is underserved. It's much more difficult to do when there are lots of people living there with clout. I view this mainly as a District 1 issue. I don't see this as having citywide impact. Therefore, I give great deference to the council member whose district this is in. That council member knows this district and knows that area and knows those people much better than I do. I was not persuaded by some of the arguments, however. I am not all anti-boos, anti-tobacco. I think they can be regulated. I think we do regulate them all over the city, and I don't view them through the same lens as some of my council colleagues do. In fact, I can't wait, Angelique. I will tune in for this when a marijuana dispensary decides they want to open up in your district. I want to see what your folks will say. And I'm also not persuaded by the gas station argument. I just wish that everyone who is against gas stations would go out and buy an electric vehicle. Then we wouldn't have the gas, the need for the gas stations. But until we do that, we're gonna be dependent on gas stations for a long time to come. So I'm not persuaded by that argument. I do find, however, that the project is inconsistent with the general plan and the Thomas Community Plan and with current zoning, and that it does shift because of the gas stations and the motels. It shifts the land use from employment center support retail to more highway commercial. And the city already has a zoning for that right down the road, where we want the highway commercial to go. So because of that, I will support the denial of the project, and I second the motion.
Okay, thank you. Are there other members up here? Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Ashby and then Shanir.
We got a Councilmember Shanir first, since he has not had a chance to speak yet. Go ahead.
Sure, thanks, Mayor. It's a little bit of deja vu for me around gas stations and residents. You know, I'm gonna vote with the staff recommendation and support Councilmember Pro-Tim Ashby, also because I do think that she knows her neighborhood best. I do want to say that I don't think, I think there's been a lot of problems with this process, and I would hope our planning folks, and I had this discussion with them offline, can go back and look at some of the issues that happened. I think that the developer, you know, at various times was, you know, in the mode of redoing his plans, was given either false hope or hope by the planning staff that they would be supportive. Now, even if they had been supportive of this, it wouldn't mean that the council would make a different decision than it will make tonight. So I don't know that you can take that to the bank and say, "This should be turned around or decided upon because of the staff being one way or another." Ultimately, it's the council's decision. But I do think that, you know, even though we made some mistakes around the process, and certainly the Planning Commission meeting, where you had so many people who were cut off or never got to speak, probably made a difference to the Planning Commission from talking to my conventioner. I think that outcome could have been different. But again, at the end of the day, I think when you have overwhelming support from a neighborhood like this, when you have the council member who knows her district best, I think that's the way we should be going. So I'm gonna support Angelique on this and support the staff recommendation.
Right, I'm gonna weigh in. I just want to make a few comments. I would refer to Angelique, unless Steve Hansen or Rick Jennings, do you have any? Eric Gara, at this point? So, okay, so first of all, we've had a lot of talk on this, Council. First of all, this is quasi-injudicatory. It is different than a traditional policy decision where you can opine ahead of time. Our job in a quasi-injudicatory hearing, regardless who the people are, who the council member is, is to listen to everybody and make our best independent judgment. And so as I sit here and I listen, I do believe what Jay and others have said, that, and I know Councilmember Carr is going to maybe react to this, but deference should be given to the district council member when it comes to a land use decision. It affects strong deference. In the instance that I want to relitigate that involved the homeless shelter, to me, homelessness is frankly more compelling than a gas station or a drive-through Burger King. So I do start with the presumption that deference should be given to the district council member and her community. But I also think it is fair, even if it's uncomfortable and it irritates the council member a little bit, to at least have the discussion that Jeff Harris has raised because there is one part of this that I'm confused about, and it really relates to the question that I raised at the very beginning here. Let me tell you where I stand on these issues in general. I'm against tobacco, pretty uniformly. I don't think we need more fast-food drive-throughs, especially against community opposition. And frankly, I'm not a big fan of gas stations, especially as we're trying to convert to an EV, an EV economy, and we're touting climate change and all the other things that we are working on. And yet, the thing that still is the one thing that's troubling me about all of this is that the planning requirements in Thomas are multi-layered. This parcel and property is zoned for a gas station. And yes, as the planning staff said, it would take a PUD amendment to actually allow it to be built, but as I understand it, that's just for design. That's not for the use itself, so the use is allowed. Okay, so let's assume the use is allowed for a moment. Then the issue is, drive-throughs, tobacco, and alcohol. Well, throw the tobacco out and the Burger King, throw it out. But I thought in the course of at least my conversations about this over the course of many weeks, that the community, in fact, wanted a high-end coffee shop, like a drive-through Starbucks. It couldn't just be conditioned upon, you do that, a high-end Starbucks, or the whole thing goes away? And so is the gas, so to me, if we deny this today, is this gas station gonna get built anyways? Because here's the irony of this. If they essentially have the right to go forward and build the gas station, even with fewer pumps, as Jeff Harris suggested, then if it goes forward, and they have essentially a right to do that, isn't the community then going to want a drive-through coffee establishment to go with it? They're not gonna want the gas station to sit out there alone. So, and I can make the argument the other way, which is to say that, deny the project here and allow, and then the applicant can go forward and build the gas station and hope that the community will in fact want the coffee. So I'm a bit baffled, even after studying this very, very closely. And frankly, God, that the city council has to take hours on an important issue like this. Does it really come down to now? This, I guess, my question, does it really come down to whether or not we could properly condition a single drive-through on it being a high-end coffee shop? And so, I don't know, and I want to hear from Angelique on this, on that question specifically. I'm not inclined to vote against the district council member on this. I'm not. But I at least want to exhaust this conversation. I mean, this developer has spent years on this, and I think it's uncomfortable, even if it's uncomfortable, it's the right thing to do to at least have that conversation. Can they, would they, do they have the darn right to build the gas station? Because it's zoned for a gas station. And then if they are, is there a negotiation to be had about throwing out the tobacco? I don't care about the alcohol either, even though they say they want it, but I don't care about the alcohol either. And getting rid of the Burger King, and then you've got, and conditioning the whole thing on a high-end Starbucks-like drive-through. And if Starbucks won't go there because there's one across the street, then all projects should be dead anyways, because that would be the condition. I just think that's worth exhausting for the benefit of people who have worked hard on this before we take a vote. And maybe I hear from Councilmember Ashby on just those sets of questions because I know this is your district, and I respect that, and in the end, I will respect that. But this is also, we've all spent some significant time on this. And these are the, if there is a possible solution here that respects the community's wishes, then I think it's worth a little bit of discomfort and at least talking about it. So, Mayor Pro-Tim?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues for your input. And Councilmember Shanir and Councilmember Carr, I particularly appreciate your support and your understanding that this is squarely a District 1 project. It's not a civic amenity. It's not an aquatic facility. It's not a massive theater. It's a gas station and a strip. massive theater. It's, it's a gas station and a strip mall and a couple of drive-through fast food spots in Council District One. It will have almost no effect on anyone but me. I think it's worth pointing out here too, Mayor, before I answer your question, that there are at least 12 fast food drive-through restaurants in my district. So it's not like we're, we're not gonna have fast food drive-through for people if that's what they want. And in fact, Councilmember Hanson's district, just up the street from this location, without even having to get on the freeway, staying in Natomas, less than two miles away, there is a drive-through Burger King as well. So we, if you really love Burger King and you really want that drive-through, it's already there. You don't have to get on the freeway. It would be less than two minutes away from anybody who lives anywhere near this location. I think it's been established that there's plenty of gas and plenty of fast food in the area and gas and coffee across the street. And we all know we don't want to lose brick and mortar buildings. Natomas has been quite fortunate. We've actually added restaurants during the pandemic and we haven't lost any so far, knock on wood. But you know, that is also in part a feature of people living in the community and eating where they live and working from home and zooming from home and taking care of kids at home. I do think I know my district well. I hope you think I do too. I hope you all would trust me with the decision in my district. And while you all have spent a lot of time tonight and over the last few weeks and even maybe months looking at this project, I've looked at it for seven years, at least two years longer than the current attorneys working on it. And I worked with the previous attorneys too. And I've seen many iterations of this project and I know the community well. And I'm asking you to vote with me, every one of you. This is an important issue to me and a vote that means a lot to me. Mayor, you mentioned your suggestion to me several weeks ago and I appreciate it. I looked into it at the time. I called the city attorney. We cannot condition a conditional use permit on a stated use. Nick asked me the same question actually months ago and we looked into it together. It's not legal. We can't do it. So it's not a potential solution. You asked a secondary question, which is can they build a gas station? It's important to understand the type of zoning. It is not conditioned for a gas station specifically. It is conditioned for a set of uses of which that includes potentially a gas station. In order for somebody to move a gas station forward, there are additional steps they would have to take. This developer would have to take those additional steps and they would have to be successful in those steps. It is important that if they do decide to do, come forward with a gas station as part of their next proposal, that they take those steps because those steps include community input. And I think it very much matters what they would want to pair with that gas station when the community goes to look at it. For example, I have encouraged this developer to look deeply at childcare because it is right next to a school. It's also a great spot for an office complex. The ingress and egress are complicated on the site, very, very complicated on the site. It is not an easy discussion. There is no modification proposed tonight, nor proposed over the last seven years that would satisfy what I think that site deserves, needs, the priorities of our city, nor would any, has anything proposed, would it meet the general plan or the Natomas community plan, both of which I think the community has a right, a right to rely upon. And nothing we are discussing here is so critical or essential that it would warrant us changing our general plan or modifying our community plan. So I stand on my request again, ask my colleagues and the mayor, please take the vote here if we can. And please vote in favor of my motion, which is to deny the project.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanson, I saw your hand was up.
It was a fleeting hand.
A fleeting hand, not now. All right.
I'm happy to say something. I mean, I was listening and I've been listening to the testimony. We had a project somewhat like this in River Oaks. And we spent a lot of time with the community reshaping the project. Ultimately, it became much better through that process. The applicant dropped certain uses, made it a neighborhood-serving amenity. And ultimately, the Neighborhood Association supported the project with the Dutch Brothers in the 7-Eleven. It had a sort of small supermarket with it. It had a food component. It was fast food, but it was like a Chipotle, you know? And so ultimately, they did support it. And I think as, as I mentioned to a few people who asked me about this project, it's, it's hard to imagine that this is a fight we should have over a gas station. Or, you know, over the objection of a council member who represents the area. I only remember three times in my career ever voting over the objections of the council member for the area. Two of them were for homelessness. One was for a major housing project. And Jeff Harris mentioned that one, McKinley Village. Strategically, it's hard to understand why this can't be worked out. I, I don't know yet how I'm gonna vote on the idea that we would send the project applicant away without some idea of how they can come back and work with the community. And so Mayor Pro Tem Ashby, and my condolences to you and your family. On your father, having lost my father when I was young, it is, is something you never really move on from. And I just have been thinking a lot about you and it's probably the last place you want to be tonight. But do you have an idea of how we move on should your motion pass tonight? Is there a, a meeting of the minds, a bridge to be built figuratively?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. First of all, the land is already, this isn't like some of the other projects that we've had where if we don't give them a, where we're not, a no vote doesn't change anything for them. They can still move forward. There are projects they could move forward on the site tomorrow. They could have one in their back pocket right now for all I know. But, you know, Tina and Nick are very able counsel, as you all know. They're smart and they know exactly what to do. Nick asked me at the beginning of the year about this project and what I thought about moving it forward. And I told him that this is exactly how I thought it would end, but they wanted to go through that process anyway. And I can only assume that that is because they wanted to learn from that process and figure out what would work in a second round. I am more than happy to work now. Terrific relationship with Nick in particular. He's a vendor at my farmer's market. We'll work it out. We'll find another way. We'll meet up. We'll talk about what, what they really want to do and, and what the community really wants and we'll keep working on it. And that's what we always do and the project will be better for it.
Thank you for that. And I do think Nick and Tina are great. I don't know the project developer, property owner, any of that stuff. So I, I mean, I think that's all I, I needed to hear. This is not the end of the story. This is just a continuance of a conversation that's been ongoing and not just in District One, but around the city. Jay mentioned Curtis Park Village and the fight over the gas station there. And I think how we shape and do these projects is really important. But in each neighborhood, they're gonna have different wants, needs, desires. And having visited North Natomas fairly recently, I didn't see a shortage of drive-throughs or gas stations. In fact, occasionally I drive to the Safeway in North Natomas because I can use my Safeway Club card there to get a reduced price. That's a little secret that not everybody knows about. Hopefully, there's not more traffic because I just said it.
Okay. So there is a motion on the floor and it has been seconded. Ready to call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Very difficult decision, but I'm gonna support Mayor Pro Tem Ashby and vote yes on this item as well. You know, I think, I'm hopeful though that the applicant and their team will reconvene with Council Mayor Pro Tem Ashby and find a workable path forward. So, but I'm gonna support her on this item.
Vice Mayor Harris?
You know, following up on Alan's comments, the, the number of CUPs in the rezone kind of tipped the balance for me on this one. I feel like it's pushing too hard. Angelique, you know, bottom line, I'll support you this time. So yeah.
Sorry, my Zoom just crashed. I heard Councilmember Harris vote yes and I will vote yes as well.
Councilmember Shanier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr? And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Tough one. I hope something.
Thank, thank you to my colleagues. Nick, I'll look forward to hearing from you. We'll, we'll just keep trying. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. All right. Let's move now to item number 17, another tough one. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. This here. Okay, Mayor and members of the council, my name is Michael Hannibut with the Community Development Department. I'm here to present on the 1625 Del Paso Boulevard Major Modification Project. This project is a major modification that, to an existing conditional use permit in order to allow for storefront operation of the dispensary use. The original conditional use permit was approved for delivery dispensary by the Planning and Design Commission in October 2019. No appeal was filed for this original approval. This modification project would allow the operation or would allow for a future operation with storefront dispensary use at the front of this existing building facing Del Paso Boulevard with an entry off of Gibson Street. On July 9th, the zoning administrator conducted a condition, a public hearing for the project and later approved the major modification on July 22nd. Two separate appeals were filed by attendees of that zoning administrator hearing within the appeal period. Staff analyzed the concerns detailed in the appeals and reaffirmed that the project still meets all criteria for the proposed storefront use and does not operate, and is not operating near a school. The Planning and Design Commission heard the appeal on September 24th and voted to uphold the appeal and deny the project. The project was then called up by Councilmember Warren of District 2 for further review as allowed for by Title 17 of the City Code for Cannabis Projects. The item was originally agendized for November 17th, 2020, then continued to a future date and formally agendized for tonight at that November 17th City Council meeting. Public notices for both of the council dates were sent by staff ahead of these meetings to ensure public awareness of these changes. For additional background of this area, on June 30th of this year, City Council approved changes to the Del Paso Arden Special Planning District further limiting certain cannabis uses in the SPD. Specifically did not forbid storefront dispensaries in that action. This is clear and recent direction from Council regarding appropriate land uses in the SPD Boulevard. Therefore, staff recommends the City Council approve this major modification. And I'd like to hand it over to the project applicants for brief presentation.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Melissa Sanchez and I'm with Harvest Law Group. And I'm pleased to be representing Greg Vaughn and Mitsumi Agi tonight on their project. I'm going to try to be as brief as possible given the previous item. And so I will be sharing my screen right now. One second. Okay, thank you. So you're being asked tonight to make some findings of fact about the project. These are found on page 15 of the staff report. I won't belabor the issue by going through all of them. But the first, second, and third have more to do with the use, the proposed use is consistent with the general plan, the proposed use is consistent with development standards, and it's also situated in a parcel and within a building that is physically suited for the use. Those don't seem to be, didn't, weren't contentious in any of previous meetings. And so I will focus my presentation on the fourth fact, which is that the proposed use and its operating characteristics are not detrimental to the public's health, safety, convenience, or welfare of persons residing, working, visiting, or recreating in the surrounding neighborhood. This is a rendering of the proposed project. This project would create a new, would create the possibility of a new retail business on Del Paso Boulevard. We have heard from the community, the Del Paso Boulevard Partnership and surrounding businesses that they want more retail on Del Paso Boulevard. And as Mr. Hannibut mentioned in his comments, that the City Council voted to allow retail specifically, retail cannabis specifically on the Boulevard. This is what the building was like in its surroundings prior to my clients taking over. It was a vacant building for over 12 years. The building hadn't been used in that long. We had, they had found needles, stolen goods, human feces, just bad things around the building. And so now with this proposal, they hope to turn it into this, which I think is much more nice for the community and a beautiful retail site. One of the issues that has come up in the comments that we have seen in opposition to the project was that having a retail cannabis dispensary at this site would decrease public safety and increase crime. There's a study that was published in September of 2019 in the well-respected Journal of Regional Science and Urban Economics that shows that a dispensary in a neighborhood reduces crime by an average of 19% in the surrounding area.
How long is your presentation, Ms. Sanchez?
What's that?
How long is your presentation?
About three more minutes?
Okay, please.
Okay, all right. The, I can make it short. So the city already has an ordinance that requires a lot of security. And here's an excerpt of that. And also having a dispensary nearby increases home values by about 8%. And these are houses that are right in the vicinity of the dispensary. Next, we are hoping that, to be able to open this building to promote equity in Sacramento cannabis industry. Right now, according to our research, only one of 30 current dispensaries open in the city of Sacramento are owned by people of color. This business will give jobs and opportunities to core applicants, other people of color who don't qualify as core applicants, and women. We are very happy to be supported by a lot of members of the Black community in the comments as well. And also the California Urban Partnership. Next, this business will create jobs, well-paying jobs for the neighborhood and we will prioritize hiring people from the neighborhood for these jobs. Another issue that came up previously was over concentration. As you can see from the satellite image, there are other dispensaries in District 2, but most of these are in, except for Dr. Green Thumbs, which is on the other side of the Arden, Arden Garden Connector. Most of them are, are in warehouse areas, not in a retail area like this one would be. The, in addition, we think it's compatible with the surrounding uses. Of course, one of the opponents was our neighbor, which is the Catholic Church, which had a school there. But the school closed at the end of the 2012 to 2013 school year, has no concrete plans to reopen. We do understand from their website and from my discussion with their attorney that they hold Catholic faith formation classes 20 to 25 times per year for an hour per week. We reached out to talk to them about how we could support them as a neighbor. We were told we just, they just had a difference of opinion on the project. But should we be approved, we intend to reach back out and make sure that our relationship with them is positive. We do share a back alley. We want to make sure that they know that we support them as their, as our neighbor. Finally, in District 2, a majority of people supported Prop 64, which legalized cannabis. The Boulevard supports us. The stars represent our neighbors who wrote letters and comments in support of our project. They're located on Del Paso Boulevard. These are the business neighbors only. And finally, we give back to our community. And I'm just gonna turn it over for a few minutes to Greg Vaughn to talk a little bit more about the project in his own words and what he's done for the community as well. and what he's done for the community as well.
I can't talk. Where do I talk to that? Hello?
You're talking now.
Okay, so thank you. No, for, for people that don't know me and Mitsu, I'm committed to Sacramento. I'm, I'm committed to Sacramento in general. You know, it's just not District Two, but you know, I'm nine-one-six for life. We, you know, during the pandemic, my foundation, you know, we gave out over five hundred thousand meals in Sacramento. We gave out over a hundred thousand meals in District Two. When the school district and the social distancing learning came into effect, we made a choice to purchase Chromebooks and whiteboards for these kids so they wouldn't be passed up. We also, you know, we, we sent a Pop Warner team to LA to play in the Super Bowl for them and their families. We sent cheerleaders to, you know, San Diego, so they would have the opportunity to travel out of, out of their city. We've been doing this for thirty years. So when the people talk about my character and the character of Mitsumi Agi, my, one of my closest friends and people that we know, you know, sometimes it appalls me because they don't know who we are. This is more than a monetary investment. This is a way to, like, me and Mitsu were talking earlier. Public safety, every day we have to go out there and pick up feces, needles, garbage, stolen goods, every single day. Crime goes down when you have a dispensary. You know, some people may believe, choose to believe that or not. It does. The facts show it. We're committed to Sacramento, not just Del Paso, but, you know, we pass out PPE, have another business in Sacramento that makes sure our first responders were taken care of during the pandemic. So when people try to question my character or that I know people, no, I commend Alan Warren for what he has done for District Two. Yes, did we grow up together? Yes, but that man cares about District Two. He cares about his people, as do all the other board members sitting on City, uh, City Council. And so this is about providing jobs for people in the neighborhood. It's about, we have thirty licenses. One of color somehow in two thousand and twenty, soon to be two thousand and twenty-one. That is not correct. Or right, as I think. And it's about diversity. It's about giving everybody the opportunity. We have never asked for anything from anybody. We won't buy all the guidelines. We've owned the building for three years. Yes, have we bought bikes? Have we bought backpacks? Have we put on, you know, the paintings on the walls? Have we supported Sacramento? Yes, because that's who we are. We are nine-one-six. So Sacramento is important to us. So this is about us taking our buildings and unboarding them, getting the boards off the window so we can get economics back into our community. Why is it okay for, I'm not mentioning names, but all the other twenty-nine cannabis people to grow in our neighborhoods but not have retail in our neighborhoods? Why is it okay to keep us boarded up and not have security and safe streets for our kids to walk? Having a dispensary doesn't mean our streets are unsafe. It means they're safer. And we're not saying it's going to stop kids from using marijuana, but I hate to say the people that are opposing us, I didn't consider the people walking in these dispensaries. I hate to say it, look just like you.
No, they, we want to know that it's from you, but we, what we have.
So, so for me, it is, you know, when people try to define myself and Mitsu's character, Grant High School, the Robinson Center, Chromebooks, whiteboards, it is, Sacramento is important with, for us, all of Sacramento. We just happen to be doing, you know, trying to open a business in District Two, so these people can, can provide for their families and be able to show them how to operate a business. So when they, they do grow up on their own, they're prepared. You know, but this is more than cannabis for us. It's about putting money back in our community and supporting Sacramento, making Sacramento the best place on the planet. I know a lot of people on that City Council know me. It, it, it's much, much more to me. I can live a lot of different places, but Sacramento's home. And I will not quit on Sacramento. I will not be defined on Sacramento. I grew up in South Sac, but all kids are important to me, and all of our communities are important to me. So with that being said, that's about it from us.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, are you, can you hear me?
Mr. Vaughn, for me, the, the question is not your character. You're a good guy. And a, and a, and a great home run hitter in the, in, in the major leagues. You do a lot for this community. That's not the question. The question is the project itself, and that's the way we, that's the way, I, I know I'll look at it, and I'm sure all my colleagues will look at it too, but thank you for. Whose voice is, whose voice is that?
Alan Warren would like to speak before we go to public comment and then maybe a bit at the end, sir.
No, that's fine. I just, but there's a voice in the background that keeps. I'm sorry? Okay. Anyways, thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Let me turn it to Alan Warren for a moment, for opening comments. Then we will hear, then we will hear from the public, and then we will talk about this. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, marijuana in our city has somewhat of a curious existence. I came onto the council in two thousand and twelve, and as the marijuana ordinance was coming forward, I actually voted against the marijuana ordinance, particularly because I thought it excluded communities like District Two. It excluded people of color. It was, it was extracting resources from communities in need and not putting the money back into places where it was generated. So those were the primary, my primary concerns. It was not because I was anti-marijuana. From the day I came on the council and we started talking about the appropriateness of, of cultivation and where it would exist, I've been very consistent. Cultivation in industrial areas, retail space should be left to retail. And primarily because if you have cultivation in retail areas, cultivation buildings and, and where marijuana is being cultivated has to have boarded doors, locked doors, boarded windows, security walking around, and it does not lend itself to the types of retail uses that we need to help repopulate and regenerate areas in our retail quarters, particularly in older parts of communities that are largely inhabited by very diverse groups of people. And so, and I've always maintained that I thought that marijuana could have a home in retail areas along Del Paso Boulevard, not in overabundance, but there could be opportunities there. And so, and that's how I feel. Mr. Vaughn and Mr. Miyagi came and approached me about potentially doing a project there, and, and I was very consistent. Same thing I've said publicly and privately. If retail is available, which now it is, and in Sacramento, we pass ordinances that allow it in retail areas. We allow it on Del Paso Boulevard in Arden now, that I could be supportive of retail. I still would not support cultivation on the Boulevard on Arden because I thought that needed to be in industrial areas. And so, to my knowledge, Mr. Miyagi and Mr. Vaughn has done everything that they were supposed to do. They've gone out and got a tremendous amount of community support. I've received a number of calls from people, and I think much like the previous issue in District One. You know, I think, you know, in areas that have these characteristics that have unsolved riddles and problems like District Two and other places, you know, it, it, it is somewhat very unique in that we need retail foot traffic, we need retail patronage, and we need the types of businesses that will promote that. Marijuana could be a catalyst. I think it also supports the restaurant scene, but it also, we have a burgeoning art scene. We have a cultural arts and performing arts theater that is under construction right now on Del Paso Boulevard. And I think some of these pieces can be foundational pieces in helping to re-invent Del Paso Boulevard, if you will, and really be a very unique place in the city of Sacramento. And so I see no inconsistencies with this project. Staff has, I think, done a good job. They've recommended it. I think the applicants have done a good job in demonstrating their community support. We have talked largely about diversity in the city of Sacramento, and again, we've talked about it. I, I, I don't know that we've really demonstrated it in terms of our actions, however, this is an opportunity, I think, to recognize that we should all have a seat at the table to really make the best of this unique opportunity. And I know that they, this is just one step. There are other items that, in terms of people actually getting the licenses to operate cannabis, and I don't think that any community should be oversaturated. However, I think District Two and all of the city have cannabis, be they legal and or illegal activities taking place in our city currently. And yet, some communities are receiving a lot less benefit from the opportunity. And so I think we have strong applicants, strong balance sheets, strong commitments to, strong demonstrated commitments to the community. We have lifelong people, residents and applicants who are a, a part of this project with a demonstrated commitment to investing, employing, and helping to uplift communities. And so I applaud the applicants. I hope they are successful, and I'm going to be supportive of their application as best I can, and I hope my colleagues will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Warren. I want to take just a short break for, we're not taking a break, but I want to interrupt this item for just a second because I know there are a lot of people that are on the line or at least waiting to hear the general plan update, which is item eighteen. And we started at five, I know, and a lot of members have been going since ten o'clock this morning in various committees. What I, that is a very important item. And what I'm concerned about is that by the time we finish this item, there are about fifteen people on the line to provide public testimony on the item we're on now. That we're not going to start the general plan discussion till nine or after. And so I would recommend, and I know there's some people who want, want to hear it tonight, but I would recommend that we put this off. I would put it off until the early part of January so that we can take up this very, very important item when the members in the public are, are fresher and so that we can spend several hours on the, the future of, of the city and its, and its growth. I know some members who are on the call tonight will not be here next year, but I, I think that's the best thing because otherwise we're going to rush through that and, and go from, you know, nine, nine-thirty till midnight. I don't think that's the best public process.
I think January is a good time, Mr. Mayor.
What's that?
I think January is a good time to have the.
Larry Carr. That's funny. So, so I would take a motion to do that right now before we get back to the.
Mayor, I will make that motion, but I, I just want to add a little staff direction to it if, if that's okay. There's been an issue with the historic district plans that needs to be corrected.
Okay, let's, let, let's not do that now. I'm just giving fair warning to the public who may be, and the staff who may be interested in the item that is likely not to be heard tonight. And, and so, you know, people can stay on the line if that's what they choose or comment, but we're not going to hear it tonight. We'll, we'll do the motion to continue after we finish this item because I don't want to interrupt it for too long, but I just wanted to put that out there. Okay? Let's get back to the item at hand.
Well, I was done with my initial comments, Mr. Mayor, so maybe we want, we want to go to public comment?
Okay, yes, I'm sorry, Councilman Harris, I mean, Councilman Warren. Let's hear from the public. Yes.
Thank you. I have eighteen callers. May I go have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you very much. My name is Ed Gill, Senior Deputy Commissioner of the California Department of Financial Protection and Innovation. So with full disclosure, due to, due to my department's future potential engagements with the cannabis industry, my comments are in support of the individuals Greg Vaughn and Mitsumi Agi, and I'm not going to take a position on the project tonight. I have known both individuals for thirty-plus years, and I simply want to endorse the efforts of the two. They have a strong commitment to the community and have displayed that time and time again with their many ventures in the Sacramento area. I'm proud to call them friends and see them as an asset to any project they develop in the Sacramento region. So with that being said, I just want to go on the record to say I think they're a fine gentleman. I think the things that I've heard tonight from Councilman Warren is a clear endorsement to me that their efforts are, 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 are truly a testament to what they've accomplished here in Sacramento. So with that said, that's my endorsement for the two, and I know it's been a long night for everyone so far, so I'll, I'll check out at this point. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Uh, thank you, and thank you for your time tonight. I just wanted to call in in support of, of this initiative with having known Mitsumi Agi and Greg Vaughn for a number of years and having participated in, in retail businesses within District Two, knowing the, the, the unique challenges of the district. I wanted to voice my support and also give a little bit of flavor to some of the community activities that Mitsumi Agi specifically has been involved with, with me through the Roberts Family Development Center. We were, we created an, an, an after-school mentoring program that would help the high school students at Grant High School. You learn how to write resumes, learn how to apply for jobs. We, we brought in a bunch of community businesses that gave mock interviews for, for some of the students. We've done that for the last three years. If it wasn't for COVID, we would have participated this year as well. So I just wanted to strongly support both the applicants as well as the retail measure that is, is before you guys, and hopefully you'll take their community service into consideration when making the decision. But they're two outstanding members of the Sacramento community, and bringing this income and revenue into that district will be a great, not only for the district, but also for the people living in it. So I appreciate your guys' time. I wanted to, to take a moment to, to recognize some of the stuff that Mitsumi Agi and Greg have already done for the community even prior to this initiative.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you, City Council members. My name is Stephen Green. I represent St. Joseph's Catholic Parish and School, which is immediately adjacent to the subject property. In addition to the arguments that we have in our written submissions, I just want to note a few significant concerns about the way the impacts of this project have been glossed over and disregarded in the reports and, and how we got to this point. You know, the City Code mandates that the Planning Commission hear any application for cannabis production or dispensary if it's within six hundred feet of a park, youth, youth-oriented facility, or a church, which is obviously the case here. And, and that rule was followed in October twenty nineteen when the Planning Commission approved the delivery-only CUP. But this year, when the applicant sought to expand the storefront sales, the staff concluded storefront dispensary use will be similar to delivery use. We would submit that's ridiculous to have, the difference between having no consumers on-site and then permitting numbers of people to be there. Those obvious differences there. And so it was also absurd that it went to the zoning administrator instead of the planning commission. The staff report omitted any reference to the distance of the project from the church and the school being within the six-hundred-foot limit. Only appeals filed by my client and some of the residents in the neighborhood actually got the matter back before the planning commission. And after reviewing the same arguments prevented by staff today, in an eight-three vote, the commission found that the expansion was detrimental to the public health, safety, convenience, or welfare of the neighborhood and would result in the creation of a nuisance due to proximity to the church and the school. Now, for a third time, the staff report presents the same arguments that were previously rejected, such as that the parish school is not a school under the code despite the fact that children regularly gather there for religious education and are aged six to sixteen, the exact group intended to be protected by the cannabis restrictions in the code. And once again, the report has no mention of the close proximity of the church, the park play area, which is four hundred feet away, the church buildings, two hundred feet away, or the school, only thirty-five feet away. We believe that the record shows that staff has disregarded the close proximity.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, we believe that they've disregarded the close proximity, the fact that kids are there seven days a week, both daylight and nighttime hours, and that the restrictions in the code.
Thank you for your comments.
Protect those children from those harms.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you for accepting my call. My name is Jackie Moore, and full disclosure, I've just moved here from the Bay Area. This marks my second year here, so I'm not really sure what jurisdiction or who I belong to or what avenue. But the bottom line is, I'm calling really to support Greg Vaughn and his endeavor to continue to make a difference in Sacramento. Prior to me moving here, I worked in the Silicon Valley for one of the probably, one of the most innovative and powerful technology companies in the world. And my role is talking with people from around the world, from the most prestigious universities to industry leaders. And the reason why I bring that up is that they're all special. And it resonated with me when I met Greg. He kind of falls in that same category of special, being a person of character. And I admire him for his contributions to the greater Sacramento area from his philanthropy to what, feeding the hungry and just making a difference. And after getting to know him personally, I think he is perhaps one of the most genuine people who could really make a difference in not only the greater area but the specific community overall. Speaking, I came from, although I'm in the Silicon Valley, I grew up in Oakland, in the inner city. And most of our role models, unfortunately, were people that were not doing things very properly, contributing to society. So to have a man not only make a difference to the community overall from a tax revenue perspective but also to the black community.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, I would highly, highly recommend and really appreciate if you guys would allow him to have this business venture going forward. I think it would make a big difference, and I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
My name is Jane McCauley, District Two resident. I'm also one of the appellant. This is about land use. I wanted to remind everybody, Melissa Sanchez read the findings for sixteen twenty-five, which is twenty-two feet from a school. I wanted to read the findings of denial for a storefront dispensary that is oh-point-four mile away from sixteen twenty-five at twenty-two seventeen Del Paso Boulevard. This project was denied. It's across from Roberts Family Development, and it's also next to a church. This is what the finding said. The proposed use and its operating characteristics are detrimental to the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare of persons residing. It goes on to say the proposed project presents a security risk to community, negative effects on youth. There's an over-concentration of cannabis in the area and does not support the goals of the special planning district to retain and improve economic vitality of the struggling and troubled commercial corridor. So also regarding the school, being a school versus not a school, we have the Cola Katronis project coming in, which is less than a mile away. That's thirty-five hundred people. We have Lumberjack, which is eight hundred people. We have two other housing projects that are very close by. The way the Catholic schools typically work is they will fill a school up, and then they will help each other by opening another school, and it will go, that school will reopen. We need school choice in District Two, and that will be a beautiful, it's a beautiful campus. I hope you guys have been able to go over there and see it. It's one of our pride and joys of District Two. It's a hundred years old and very beautifully maintained. I sent in pictures. The elephant in the room here are the changes that were made to the FPD. District Two leaders have been asking since 2012, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, on and on.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
As an appellant, do I not get extra time? How come in the past, everybody has gotten extra time?
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening and happy holidays. My name is Robert Cool. My family and I have been owners in District Two since nineteen eighty-nine. I'm also past president of the North Sacramento Chamber, and I'm also a board member of the North Sacramento Chamber also. We've struggled for many years to bring businesses to our area and trying to keep businesses there. I'm in full support of sixteen twenty-five Del Paso Boulevard. I think with Greg Vaughn and Mitsumi Aga, I think that they're entrepreneurs that will help revitalize our area and make it to what it needs to be. Believe me, this is not, we're not Palo Alto, okay? We don't have Apple knocking on our doors. We need businesses like Greg and Mitsu to bring more businesses into our area. They're great guys. They'll do excellent for the community. They have, they've proven it over and over. Like Greg said, they're nine-one-six for life, and he's proven that without a doubt with his Vaughn Valley Foundation. Also, another thing is that riffraff will only buy from riffraff. Dispensaries, like Greg said, are people just like you and me. So I'm in high support of this initiative, and I hope you guys pass it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Ronnie, and I'm a resident of Old North SAC, and I'm calling because our association, the Old North Sacramento Community Association, we're firmly against the proposed change of the storefront dispensary for sixteen twenty-five Del Paso. You know, this whole thing passed, the cannabis deliveries. During COVID, there was some confusion, I think, of how people should oppose this, but it was passed for the delivery. But everyone's against it being a storefront delivery. And I think that you guys need to take that into consideration, that the planning already, they already rejected it. If you look at precedent, twenty-two seventeen Del Paso Boulevard, they were rejected by the planning department because of its proximity to, you know, vulnerable youth programs and other businesses. You look at the Roberts Center off Del Paso, and they were able to avoid that business opening up. So why will we give sixteen twenty-five any sort of leeway when they're going to be right next to youth programs, are going to be next to a teen center opening up? There's a library, which is an ultra-modern regional library just minutes from sixteen twenty-five. So you're talking about the same impact to children and youths, and we're against it. There's some talk of enhanced security that this will bring if it's passed, and it's just a farce, that's just not true. The P-bid already pays for security around the whole boulevard.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Sure. I would hope that the council will read your emails. You're going to get a lot of emails from communities.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, thank you. My name is Greg Jefferson. I'm the vice president of the Del Paso Heights Community Association, and I would like to say good evening to the mayor and council and also to extend my condolences to Prokem Ashby for the loss of her dad. I'm here to address, of course, item number seventeen. And our sentiments, my sentiments are that we, the Del Paso Heights Community Association is not in support of the idea of having a dispensary next to a school. We, I do applaud the conversation and effort that Mr. Vaughn has made. I listened to him earlier tonight, and he's done some great things in our community in regard to addressing the COVID issue. However, the previous caller before me was at a meeting we had in our community on Saturday, and we have a unified group called All Eyes on D2, which is made up of members of the Robla Community Association, the Del Paso Community Association, the Dixie Anne Community Association, the Noralto Community Association, and the Penn Ali Community Association. And we all agreed unanimously that we are against this proposal. Number one being that it's because it's the location. And like I said, my hat's off to Mr. Vaughn, but because of the location, we are against that. And secondly, because we are inundated already with this type of industry in our district. I kind of wish we had the problem with the Starbucks that District One is having. And in addition to that, we are, it seems that.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes. Also, another reason is because it appears the city is violating its own rules and the proximity, having the business in proximity to a school. So that being said, we are against it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, Mayor, council members. Thank you for listening. I know it's been a long night. My name is Larry Glover Mead. I live in District Two. I live about a half-mile from the proposed location. I'm going to have a couple of comments that I want to make tonight. The first are more around process, and there was some confusion. Earlier, this item was agendized for earlier in November. And when that happened, I reached out to city staff, and it was communicated that the council member had decided to pull it from the agenda and that this issue wouldn't be heard until the new council member-elect was seated. That was then confirmed by the councilman's communications from the councilman's office. And so that message was spread in our community, and so people were kind of caught off guard when all of a sudden this was on the agenda again, especially given COVID, there's lack of opportunities to connect the folks. And so that was a little bit frustrating. It feels like they're unintentionally an effort to try to squash some citizen voice. I do want to raise some issues that I have. I do think this is a backdoor process. They applied for delivery. This was under delivery, and this is an expansion. And so I feel like that's a backdoor entry, and so it's a dangerous precedent. And I think it's a bad precedent to send. And then it was interesting, Melissa Sanchez presented that there's not an over-concentration. All she showed you is District Two. There are whole swaths of the city that have no cannabis industry, Natomas, for example. And listening to the comments of the previous matter around the development of Natomas, was, I mean, I couldn't ask for more case study in equity between has and have-nots. People are talking about gas stations and drive-throughs as if they were detriments. We have a cannabis, a business wanting to open cannabis here in nine-five-eight-one-five, which disproportionately has been impacted by COVID more than most areas of the city. And to have a business selling a product that disproportionately.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, we strongly urge you to, at minimum, wait, holding onto this. Voters did overwhelmingly elect a new council member, and I wish you respect the voice of the voters who voted a new council member.
Thank you for your comments.
Part because of these issues.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm a local business owner on Del Paso Boulevard within eye shot of sixteen twenty-five regularly. I'm in full support of Mitsu and Greg's building doing this transformation. I feel that any kind of foot traffic that is brought down here is good. And I feel like any kind of opposition to this project, you know, on means of community risk, I hear a lot about. I think they should take a look down the road that it's proposed on because currently, right now, they've had a homeless person that's been, you know, a van that's been broken down there for three months right outside of this school that's so beloved. And he's been there with a barbecue and a sofa. I've reached out to them and trying to get this taken care of. I've done things like, you know, they had graffiti left on their wall for the longest amount of time. And I tried to get ahold of them to see if I could remove it personally. And I had to jump through hoops to do that. It just seems like the opposition of it, they don't tend to care about anything outside of the school or their own facilities. Whereas a retail space like this, it has security built into it. You know, we could either keep it vacant and have, you know, homeless people camping out in front of it, or we could potentially have a retail space where we're bringing people in and onto the boulevard, which is exactly what this area needs. So I'm hoping that we can have a vote for them tonight, if possible, to go ahead and get this moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, how you doing? This is Mr. Jefferson. I'm opposed to this dispensary. This is a de novo meeting. I mean, this should have already been addressed. The district does not want any more storefront dispensaries. We want grocery stores, we want, we want what District A has. We need a Del Paso Shores for District Two. I mean, they have other issues, we have other issues in D2, like the potholes, the sidewalks, and lights. We don't have lights. The parks are unsafe, and you're inviting violence into the community that would affect the housing value and the cost of living in the district. Drugs devalue property because of violence and negligent behavior due to the marijuana affecting one's ability to reason and think. On the boulevard, I personally witnessed people speeding and creating more distracted drivers on the boulevard is dangerous. If you continue to try to make District Two a dispensary heaven for people who want to profit from it, attempting to make the district into Sacramento's version of Amsterdam, it's wrong. This will bring property value down. We need opportunities to grow, not get high. The amount of jobs at the dispensary that they brag about in the notes that it will produce is day and night compared to the unsavory behavior and enticing people to come to the boulevard to get high. It's just dangerous. Anybody who votes to support this is only supporting Allen because of all the support that he gave you. It's a conflict of interest for Allen to even bring this up again because I believe Mr. Vaughn is his friend. And Daryl Roberts wrote against the twenty-two seventeen Del Paso Boulevard dispensary because it was too close to his son. But now he's supporting it, the chamber is supporting it because they want memberships. Elsa, she was supporting it. Everybody was against the other one, but they're deciding who gets to sell weed in District Two.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes. Councilman election, Lolo E., was elected, and don't pull a Donald Trump tonight by allowing for Allen to give his last minute.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments, please.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. My name is Ronald Costa. I've been a parishioner at St. Joseph Church for more than sixty years. I'm gonna stick with code issues. Your code says that a school should not be within six hundred feet of the cannabis place. Our school is just across the alley. Somebody said twenty-two and a half feet. Also, the same code says that it should be more than six hundred feet away from a church, but it's only two hundred feet away. And that's being ignored. Both of those issues are being ignored. The Bergstrom Apartments is another issue. They're next door to it. And your city code says that there should be at least three hundred feet between the cannabis place and residential. That also applies to the senior citizen apartments, which are located up on the corner of El Monte and Gibson. They're within about two hundred and fifty feet, and your code allows three hundred feet. St. Joseph's School is a multimillion-dollar asset in the community. And it's been there for about a hundred years. And approval of this cannabis thing will negate the St. Joseph's School as not doable because the cannabis is too close. So being a valuable asset to the community, this permit should be denied. And when our children are in school, having their religious education, that makes that place a youth-oriented facility. Your code requirement is six hundred feet from a youth-oriented facility. The youth-oriented facility should be, should not have cannabis smell in it.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
From the classrooms, you can smell cannabis smoke within the classroom when they light up over there at that cannabis joint.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, council. Hello, Mr. Mayor. This is Nancy Kitz. As one of the appellant to the zoning administrator's decision regarding this manner to the planning commission, I believe that the applicants have misused the major modifications section. Title V defines a cannabis dispensary storefront as a business selling cannabis or cannabis products from a building or structure that is open to customers. However, the applicants have a delivery-only dispensary at this point. I believe that it also indicates that the planning commission has the proper venue to decide these types of storefront cups that are near a park and near youth-oriented facilities, near a church, and near childcare, et cetera. So I support the mayor for this continuance into January. And I, I hope you guys have a good rest of your night. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Should I start now, or?
Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes. Good evening, council members. Honorable Mayor Steinberg, my name is Sean Laloey. The reason that I'm calling is that the question I think that existed in our community is that, why this site? Why here? You know, this is a special planning district, a commercial corridor, an area that's part of a larger economic development plan that will bring much-needed transformation and increased opportunity to the community and to the district. Of all the sites throughout Sacramento, it's a little bit confusing, and I'm kind of at loss, why this site was selected? And how the proposed cannabis project is the best use for this site? There are so many gray areas and unknowns. You know, does this project fall in alignment with the core objectives? What are the community benefits? Is this project, if this, if this project doesn't secure a cannabis permit, if I'm reading the staff report correctly, then what happens? Does it move forward with a lounge and a retail space? Again, I think there are so many gray areas and so many more concerns that should be addressed that the community at large are rightfully deserving of an answer. You know, again, this has, Mr. Vaughn and his partner, you know, I want to be very thankful and truly grateful for all the great things they've done for the city. So this is nothing against these wonderful individuals. This is talking about this particular site. As far as District Two, which, you know, it shows that it's been oversaturated, hence the denial by the planning department. But there is zero data that shows if any of that money from the cannabis has actually been coming back to District Two.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Absolutely. Thank you so much. You know, I think we need to spend a little bit more time on this project and let the community and the owners of this facility actually get together and discuss this side.
Thank you for your comments.
Tonight, it might set a bad precedent going forward, and we've seen our fairly share already. Thank you very much for your time, council.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
My name's Christine Spencer. I am one of the D2 leaders. We have had two businesses in District Two. I, my concern is the proximity to the church and the church school that could potentially become a school obligated to give up their license because there's a school there, because the city council did not, you know, look at the distance and proximity, because it was a school and still has the school buildings there. Also, you know, the planning and design commission is, you know, is concerned that with the call-ups of forty-five hundred and this one, that they're being undermined. They're making land use decisions, yet, you know, Mr. Councilman Warren is undermining them by calling this up and making it a decision here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes. My name is Adrian Perez.
Please continue.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I think most of you know me. I've been working on Del Paso Boulevard since two thousand and eight, providing primarily marketing and public relations work. And let me tell you, it's been a struggle. We see a lot of businesses come in and a lot of businesses go out. Unfortunately, the residents in the area really don't support much of the businesses that are on the Boulevard. And as a result, they really don't understand a lot of things that have been happening. But this particular project, sixteen twenty-five, I think is gonna be a diamond on the rough that we need. We need something besides stonies, besides the, you know, the cafe, the brewery. We need things that are going to really help our economic development on that Boulevard. And we need something. And this, I think, is a grand opportunity for the Boulevard and for District Two. We need to start somewhere. I think this is an incredible start and opportunity. I want to thank Allen for bringing it forth. And I encourage all of you to vote yes on this project. We need it, not only for equity reasons, but more importantly, for economic reasons. We need a strong economic base in order to have a strong tax base, to be able to pay for the fixing of the roads and the lights and everything else. But without a good tax base, how can we possibly be able to afford to pay for all these things? We need something strong. This is a good item. Look, the Catholic Diocese is not gonna open up that school. We all know that.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes. But I, but I want to thank you for the opportunity, and please vote yes on this project.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council members for giving me an opportunity to speak at this public hearing. My name is Darius Turner. I'm well acquainted with Greg Vaughn and Mitsu Miyagi. I'm not an expert on the cannabis business or the core program, but I can attest to is the type of individuals that these two gentlemen are. And if they thought it would bring any harm to District Two, I can say with absolute certainty that they would not have anything to do with it. I do work in District Two at Grant High School. I do a free football camp. Greg and Mitsu on a regular donate their time and their money. Mitsu has ran a mentorship program at Grant High, him and his wife, out of his own time and money. They've done a lot in District Two, just on their own, that have absolutely nothing to do with business. It's just about giving back. That's who they are as people. So my belief is that if they are behind the project, the project is something that they truly believe will benefit the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening. My name is Vaughn Havens, and I'm calling in support of Greg Vaughn and Mitsu's business at sixteen twenty-five Del Paso. Greg and Mitsu has been outstanding in Sacramento, and they should be given all the ability to show that they can come in to the city and create other businesses. I want to thank them for everything they have made for us. As you know, Mayor, Greg has come before you in his other projects from his foundation. I've listened to all the comments tonight in opposition. Why now are we bringing up things that has already been before the planning commission? Before, that has been corrected, and all it needs now is the approval to go ahead. I'm not gonna keep you guys. I want to thank each and every one of you, and I wish you have the holidays. And again, when we need to talk about this again, I will be, again, coming before you for approval of this project. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, this is Teresa McConnell. I live in the District Two. And what I'm hearing from the businesses and the comments, the businesses that are calling in and commenting in support of this pro, this project, they're, they're known Alan Warren supporters, which is not a problem. But everything that they're listing is completely, it's irrelevant. Most of them are referring to the closed-up businesses that are along the Boulevard. If that was really the case, if that was really the problem, and that was really the issue of trying to get this sixteen twenty-five open, well, Carol's Books would not be dislocated right now and moving out off of the Boulevard. It was a well-established business that had events there. It was a well-known bookstore. That lease was not renewed by Alan Warren. For no, for any reason except for disagreement of support. If you really cared about businesses being open on the Boulevard, that lease would have been renewed. The graffiti on the walls that wasn't taken care of by the church, come on. The homeless that are living there for the last three months, they're living everywhere for the last three months because the city has a ban on displacing them. That has nothing to do with the church and whether they care about their property or not. I just hear this, this same, you know, verbiage coming out of the support, which is completely irrelevant. I just, I would support moving it to January, where the new council members can vote, and they can come together, and they can discuss whether this is the right place, like Sean just said. I think that really needs to be discussed, and that's what I'd like you to do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Is that the public testimony, Madam Clerk?
That's correct. I have no more callers.
Okay. Thank you again. I just want to reiterate to anybody who may be on the line on wanting to talk about the general plan issues, that it's gonna be my recommendation that we continue that item immediately after we are through with this item. So, and I'm sorry, but it's, it's late, and I want to make sure that we give that general plan issue the time it deserves, and not late at night after a very long day. And it is not time-sensitive, at least in the very short term. So, let's get back to this item. Are there council members, comments, questions from council members? I know I've got a couple, but I can, I can wait to hear from the members. What? Councilmember Carr. I know, Councilmember Warren, you can weigh any time you want, but I just want to make sure that we hear from all the members. But go ahead, Councilman Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. When we started dealing with the cannabis issue, there was a lot of uncertainty. We didn't understand the impacts that cannabis establishments would have on the communities. We didn't understand the impacts of allocating group facilities. We didn't understand almost anything about it. So we put a lot of protections in place, especially for dispensaries. We put a lot of protections in place for growth as well, for cultivation as well. And what we found out in the years since is that the impacts are not nearly as significant as we once thought. And I had gone into several cannabis shops, and I was taking CBD oil. And not only was it very secure and no smell, none of the other issues that we had feared. There weren't people loading around. There weren't people smoking. There weren't people doing anything except going in and coming out with their packages, which were sealed. So I think we have kind of, we've overprotected against it, and for good reason, because we didn't know. But I don't see anything wrong with this project. I'm gonna be in full support.
Thank you, Councilman Carr. Councilman Warren, did you want to speak now, or other members?
I, I can, Mr. Mayor, I can wait until the rest of the members speak.
Okay. Are there other members? So, I'll do it. Let me tell you what I'm concerned about here with this, and it's process more than anything else. I like Greg Vaughn a lot. I appreciated all that he said and his choice to make Sacramento Home and to invest in Sacramento. And I know Councilmember Warren has, you know, gone back and forth on the cannabis issue, but, you know, has done his very best to weigh all of the, all of the different issues. But here's the issue that I have. I don't, I have an open mind on the project, a real open mind. But I remember when I was mayor-elect, elected in June of, I think it was June of two thousand and sixteen, did not take office until December. And in the interim, there was a major decision that the city council was being called upon to make about the future of the Community Convention Center. And it was a big issue, and I had some concerns about the project. And so I asked then-mayor and my future colleagues if they would consider putting off the decision, so that I, as the new mayor, could weigh in on the issue. And they agreed. And of course, when I got into office, we took a look at this, and working with Councilmember Hanson and the rest of the council and the city staff, we ended up modifying the project in a way that frankly saved us almost fifty million dollars. All that money was gonna go into the waterfront, and COVID happened, but we're still going to get there. And I think that was important. So in this instance, it's a little bit awkward. So in this instance, it's a little bit awkward because Councilmember Warren is our colleague now. And, uh, and yet Councilmember Lulowee, um, won, uh, the election fair and square and is going to be sworn in in two weeks. And so I, I think would be more comfortable myself, uh, continuing the item, um, so that the new council member could at least weigh in. I heard him say that he's not necessarily against it. He wants to get the community together with, uh, with Mr. Vaughn and, and to discuss this. And in terms of the urgency of this, the other thing that I just wonder about a little bit is that we have not issued a permit, a dispensary permit. Uh, you know, we've decided we're going to go above thirty to forty with Core. We have not issued a permit yet for a dispensary. And so i- is this a little bit of a chicken before the egg situation where, you should get the permit first? I don't know the answer to that. That's just something that is, it was on my mind, but mostly I just, and it's a little awkward for me, but I, I do feel that the person who's the incoming member of the city council, um, ought to at least have, uh, uh, the ability to, to, to weigh in as the person that's going to represent the district for the next four years. So I, I'm sorry, but I put that out there and, uh, happy to hear from the rest of my colleagues.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is Alan. Let, let, let me just say, you know, uh, and, and all due respect, you know, there would be no need for any further council participation for Councilman Hanson or myself. And yet we still are, are the elected officials and we are, uh, acting in our capacity, you know? I had, you know, the, the, the comments that you raised, I think, you know, have some validity, validity. Uh, you know, however, you know, the, it, it's the applicant's choice to be heard. And so, and so I respected the applicant's decision to want to be heard and, uh, completely accepting of the council's, uh, decision on this item, you know? I mean, it is, in my opinion, you know, you get a lot of people who have a loud voice, but they, you know, as, as Mr. Perez said, they don't frequent the Boulevard. They don't invest. They don't spend money. And yet those that do are being held captive by those that don't. And so we got communities that have fallen behind and continue to fall behind. And when people come forward with good projects and they're making substantial investments to help turn them around, they run into process or politics, if you will. So, but I am completely accepting of the council's will. Uh, I am prepared. I, I believe it's a good project. I'm prepared to support it. But again, if council decides something different, then obviously that is, uh, the course that the city will take. And so, uh, with that being said, I'm, uh, open to listening to the rest of my colleagues.
Thank you, sir. Um, Councilmember Jennings.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I, I want to support Councilmember Warren in that he's sitting in this meeting and he has represented that district for the last eight years, uh, if my math is correct. Um, and when I looked at the, the drawings of this project, it is a project that is much needed on the Boulevard. Anybody who has driven down Del Paso Boulevard from Highway one sixty to El Camino Boulevard sees what, there, there are significant needs that need to happen on the Boulevard. And to bring in a business that, and a business owner, owners that have the ability to bring others to the Boulevard in order to revitalize the Boulevard is much needed. And so this is a legal business now, and I know people have their feelings about whether or not cannabis should be in a retail center. When, when I moved to the Bou- Boulevard with my nonprofit, they didn't want any nonprofits on the Boulevard. You know, I almost got Xed out because I'm a nonprofit trying to do business in a area that needs a business to do it. But I almost got Xed out because the council member at that point in time, and it wasn't Alan Wayne Warren, did not want nonprofits on the Boulevard. So take Greg Vaughn out of this. This is a legal business and you have a businessman that has the revenue and the resources and the business partnerships and the acumen and the professionalism to be able to put a great business on the Boulevard and to make sure that it's safe for all those who visited it and those who are around it. And he's, he's involved not only in that business, but he's involved in making nine-one-sixes, he says, the Sacramento community better. So I'm in full support of making this happen tonight, um, because I think he has done everything he needs to do to bring a business to an area that he feels he can not only run his business, but effectively impact other businesses as well. And we need that kind of support on the Boulevard.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jennings. Um, who else is up? I'm, I'm sorry. Hanson first?
Hanson then Harris.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Um, Alan and I, uh, have served together for almost eight years and we haven't always seen eye to eye on issues, but I think that one of the things that I've always been surprised by in the council is the, the sort of schizophrenic approach we have to cannabis issues. And there's a variety of reasons for why that's happened. My particular district has a large number of dispensaries. Dispensaries themselves, from what I can tell, have never been the source of a problem in my district. Illegal grows, other things, um, unlicensed facilities, those have been the places where we end up with problems. Um, and, um, I've always been surprised at sort of the, um, nature of the opposition or support for these projects, depending on the neighborhood. But here, you know, uh, as the clerk informed me during Lawn Ledge earlier today, until five o'clock on December fifteenth, Mr. Carr, Mr. Warren and I will be pressed into service, particularly, um, at P, P and P E for Mr. Carr and I on the fifteenth, and then I'll be at Lawn Ledge that day as well, right up until five o'clock. And, um, you're going to get your money's worth out of every minute of my time here. Um, and I don't like to waste a day. I don't like to waste a minute or an hour. And one of the things I particularly didn't like when I came into office was there were a lot of cans kicked down the road, um, projects that had lingered for a long time. Um, and I, I don't like handing off to others what we could do ourselves. So, so I, saying that, you know, I, I don't see a fundamental policy objection in the issue of approving this tonight. I think it's this ongoing relationship between, um, the, the Boulevard and neighbors. And, and I don't think we can resolve this whether we pass this item or delay it. I think those are issues that have percolated for a long time and it will be up to, um, um, Alan's successor, uh, Mr. Lulowee or mine, Ms. Venezuela, or Mr. Carr's successor, Ms. Vang, to resolve those, those type of things. And, um, in the end, uh, whether it's this or the general plan, I think we, we should be giving this our full service up until the end. And so that's, that's my point of view on it tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so I have a question, Mr. Hennig. The St. Joseph's School, is it a school or is it not a school? And how many feet away from the facility is it?
So in the review of it, of its operations, it is not a school as defined in Title Seventeen, which this major modification request is subject to. Um, it does not provide K through twelve instruction. So, um, in the, in staff's analysis, is not a school. Um, it has been closed for a number of years. And if it were to operate or open again, it would require its own CUP to do so.
If, they would have to get a land use entitlement to reopen as a school? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, because of the zone that it is, uh, it is in.
Okay, that, that's helpful for me. Thank you, Michael. Oh, I would, um, say along with my colleague Steve Hanson, that the dispensaries certainly in my district have not caused any issues. In fact, uh, some of the neighbors have said they've been tremendous assets in terms of security to be near them and they've, they've really had no issues. I, I think people are more fearful of that than perhaps they need be. Uh, you know, a lot of it has to do with the owner. A lot has to do with the operator, and that gives me what my one pause for concern is. We, we don't know who the operator would be. This is an entitlement without somebody to run the business. So, uh, there's an unknown there. There's a little bit of a gray area. You know, uh, perhaps the owners could rein in the operator and make them, uh, run a really tight business. But it really does come down to the quality of the business owner about, you know, uh, how they run their business. So we have a lot of rules about security. We have, actually, it's a highly regulated business. And I don't think they could get away with much. Uh, certainly there on Del Paso Boulevard. But it is somewhat of a gray area. And, you know, this is not a real time-sensitive issue because there is no operator on board. It will take a while for a Core operator to get a license and move into this business. Uh, it certainly could be put over, but, uh, you know, either way, this decision is going to come back. I, I think, actually, you know, now that I have the information about the school, I, I have enough information to take a vote. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Um, who is next up on the? Is that it? Eric Carr.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, appreciate, uh, the, uh, the opportunity here. Uh, one, I, I also, uh, you know, I, I also agree, we're going to get, we're going to get our worth, uh, out of, out of Councilmember Hanson. We made him stay for another item in Lawn Ledge, so I thought he could get away. But, uh, I, the, I think, you know, there's a couple of things here on this item, particularly because the council most recently, uh, passed a, a policy on the special planning district to allow this use. I mean, it's not like it was a, a, uh, uh, an action that we did, uh, years back or whatnot. I mean, so the, the, the ability to have this, this option exists, and that was a relatively new decision. So for, on one end, um, you know, there, as Councilmember Jennings mentioned, the, the landowner and the, and the applicant have the right to apply on this, and this is why we're hearing it. Uh, the other piece that I want to bring about, just because District Six has, uh, the largest number of, of cannabis dispensaries, about a third of them in the city. And, and my experience again also has been, it, it more has to do with the operator, uh, when there's an issue unless, and, and many times less of the location. If anything, what I've found more troubling is when dispensaries have been, uh, storefront dispensaries have been in, um, an industrial area that you have issues of, of, of an industrial area mixed in with the retail area where you have vehicle, uh, light duty vehicle and heavy duty vehicle conflicts. I think that, that becomes a, an issue. So, but the operator piece, I, I think is, is one that, that if, if the school was ever to open, and I have, uh, a, a Catholic elementary school in my neighborhood that hasn't, um, uh, that's closed down and, you know, unfortunately, uh, you know, hasn't, they don't have any plans to open. There's no demand for it to open. Uh, in fact, the reduction in the schools is, is going even, even smaller in the area. Um, I, I guess the, the question that I have for staff here is how would this affect, or how do you see this, this affecting during the, the application for the business operating license? Would, what, what would the staff look at in, in the context of issuing the business operating license? Because I think that's where you could put some scrutiny on, on who the operator is. So maybe that's a question for staff here.
Well, I would, uh, first say, um, the ability to obtain a permit to operate is, is not administered by the planning department. It's from the Office Cannabis Management. So, um, I'll, I'll look to Christian Spence for any kind of clarification on their processes.
Yeah, I, I concur with, uh, with, uh, Michael. Well, I'm, I'm, uh, we're the planning department. We're looking at a land use decision here. We're, um, very confident in the, in the decisions that, uh, we've made regarding, um, whether or not this is a school. The zoning administrator upheld, you know, our findings. Um, I will just say that this has already been approved as a dispensary. Um, the planning commission already made the findings, um, uh, for this to be a dispensary, and essentially they are making a modification to add the storefront component to this. So that's all been pretty well-vetted. Um, and I, I, we, I would have to defer to the Office of Cannabis in terms of, um, how the operator would be scrutinized.
Hi, good evening. Lady Mills Stein, representing the Office of Cannabis Management today. Um, this is like any other, uh, cannabis permit, the CUP has to come before the operating permit. There is a, an extraordinarily complex and detailed application process for a cannabis dispensary permit when those become available or if somebody chooses to move there, that any applicant would go through and it would be reviewed and have to meet all of the requirements that any other storefront dispensary currently is obligated to meet in, um, consideration of approval of that application.
Thank you, lady. And I think that's important. And just to confirm, lady, the, the BOPs, the business operating permits, they're, they're, are, are they in a two-year renewal process right now?
They're annual renewal.
Annual renewal process right now. So I think that's an important thing to note here. Number one, there's already cannabis activity, a business cannabis activity happening at the site that is in that location. Uh, number two, the, the type of activity is going to change into a more retail function. Right now it's in delivery function, but it's going to be a more retail function. So I think that's where the opportunity where there, there's yearly review of how that operator functions through the Title Five side, the BOP side. So I, and I, so I think that's an important factor to consider here. Everything that I've heard in the testimony here, nobody has said that the applicant is a person that they, they find unsavory or unwilling to be here. And, and that seems to be the, the biggest challenge in, um, on the BOP side. So, uh, so I think I've got enough information here. Um, I, I do think that the questions that were posed uh, by Mr. Lulowee, uh, about, you know, what is the future of the Boulevard, how, what, how do, what, what kind of other uses are? That's a conversation that, uh, the, that the community in the business improvement districts need to have, and how does this, this fit in there? But I think I've got enough information here. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, if, if at all possible, close the public hearing and, and call for the vote.
Uh, Alan, you need to make a motion.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to move that we approve, uh, the item, close the public hearing and approve the item.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Warren and a second by Councilmember Carr. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye. Aye.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Gera.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
What about now? Thank you. Take two one, the measure passes and, um, congratulations. Very good. We move on. Okay. Uh, let us now move to, um, well, the, the issue of the continuance that I, I mentioned earlier on, uh, the general plan, uh, item, which definitely, is not time-sensitive, although it is very, very important.
Mayor, I'm on the motion to continue, but I just, there's an issue that I committed to asking staff to resolve that I just like in direction that, um, so I'll just move that we continue the item, but direct staff to work on resolving the conflict between the historic district plans and the land use map so that the historic district plans are respected, um, and the land uses and, uh, processes don't undermine them.
Second.
Okay, moving to second. Is there remaining public testimony on this item from people who insist on being heard tonight?
There is not any public testimony on this item.
Very good. Then let's, uh, call the, call the roll on the, uh, on the continuance.
Mayor, uh, just if you, if you'd indulge me for fifteen seconds.
Go, go, of course.
Um, since I won't be here for the hearing on it because of the motion that I made, um, there's some very important things in this general plan. Uh, the elimination effectively of R one zoning to
The elimination effectively of R1 zoning to allow for multiple units on the same property to weave in density throughout the city, very important. Looking at how growth happens on our border, extremely important. Some of the changes to commercial corridors, road diets, other things contemplated are really, really important. And so I appreciate the fact that you wanted to have a good, solid hearing on the general plan update. It will, it will be something that contributes positively to our efforts around climate change and active transportation, so I'm excited to see the direction the staff has taken. I know that they've waited a long time to present, so I just wanted to encourage everyone to continue on the path.
Thank you, Steve. I know your voice so, voice will be heard, inside or outside. So let's call the roll on the continuance.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Shanir.
Aye.
Councilmember Geta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. Okay, and again, I know how much work and has been put into this. And again, the purpose of the continuance is to make sure that we do it, and your work, the justice that it deserves, is really important for the community, Remy, thank you, and others. Okay, are there, is there public testimony on items not on the agenda?
No, Mayor, I do have two callers on matters not on the agenda, and I do have district nominations to read into the record. So the board and commission appointments are Major U Community Advisory Committee, Maribella Sala from District Three, and Gina Lujan from District Six.
Very good. The two members at the public, then we'll take council ideas and questions, and I know I've got two for myself. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first caller. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening. Uh, this is Mike Barnbaum. I would like to request that either this or the next city council, as well as the Board of Supervisors, have a discussion and possible action, again, at a future meeting on whatever safety and security means necessary, need to be undertaken, with all suggestions being considered at the table, including but not limited to the use of metal detectors at the Arden Fair Shopping Center. Our community had a very tragic incident on Black Friday, and it shook me very hard before going into my virtual Friday night service led by Rabbi Alfie, Michael Hersher, and First Lady of the City of Sacramento.
This is like five cities.
When.
Okay, gotta be in.
And was developing that two teenagers were killed, and it was by another teenager by way of gun violence inside the mall. It made me think we have safety and security measures in place at Sacramento International Airport, the council chambers with in-person meetings, the Golden One Center, and the State Capitol, among other places in our region. And there has not been a news event in these locations because of the safety and security measures.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, so I would like to ask the council and the board, would you consider this discussion at a future council meeting?
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, yes, my name is Lambert of To The Bay and Back Cheesecakes. I am so thrilled to hear, to have heard Greg Vaughn was involved when we first started our cheesecakes. We were cooking out a Rancho Royal, and he patronized us. It's good to see he's still alive and well. I hope Mr. Warren connects him to our website. Speaking of cheesecakes, I wanted to let the mayor know and everyone else that our cheesecakes went viral during Thanksgiving, and during that time, it was brought to my attention to read this article, Mayor, and it talks about, the city continues to lose black managers despite efforts. And then it talks about the following statistics, that a diversity report is coming out in December. I can't wait to see it. But it said last year, three hundred and seventy-nine of the city's managers were white. Out of that group, Hispanics were next to last, blacks were last, and it was, it was surprising to me that Asians were right behind whites. And so it does not surprise me that blacks are not getting a lot of this money. And we should have been qualified for the money. We met every quiet criteria. We hit every deadline. We've just recently been endorsed by Better Business Bill. And I guarantee you, everybody that's on that roster has somebody in their family, or they do, who likes cheesecakes. Again, cheesecakes appeals to all races and both sexes. We're ready to go, Mayor, and I'm just reaching out to you to organize an effort to get us funded. It's December. This is the month, and I, I want to thank Mr. Shanir for saying it would be a disgrace.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, son to the band Back Cheesecakes.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Council. This is Jamar Jefferson. Made a peace of God to create a guide us all to make better decisions in 2021. I understand that y'all just passed without a unanimous decision despite the, the mayor. So congratulations on being opposed to it, or at least allowing the new guy to have a say so. But I would like for the city to consider a Haven for Hope type facility in Sacramento. I just witnessed a man digging out of the trash. I shared with him what I had, but nevertheless, billions of dollars have went through your hands, and we still have problems in this city. We talk about the economic development, and you talk about helping the kids. You're hurting families simply by allowing for poverty to exist under your watch. Each and every last one of you are responsible. I, I think, uh, uh, Mr. Mr. Jennings, who I respect and have nothing but love for, he said that he would have probably been Xed out on the Boulevard because of what the previous council didn't want nonprofits on the Boulevard. Well, nonprofits is, is not a business. It shouldn't be on the Boulevard. You need businesses there to create jobs, right? We need, we live in a capitalistic society that's based upon consumption, and people gotta consume your products. So at the end of the day, we need you to solve problems. You all have been in that seat. Angelique Asby is leaving in two years. Hopefully she get elected to stay Senate. So it's gonna be utter chaos, and for you to pass the marijuana dispensary, each and every last one of you lied saying that, oh, the dispensaries don't cause problems. You're right. But vehicle code 23152F says that if you drive up under the influence of marijuana, because in California, they still identify marijuana as a drug. If you drive under the influence of a drug, you can continue mass incarceration.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, yeah, thank you for allowing for us to have time to do better. And you guys, I hope that y'all do better, continue doing a great job.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please, and this is our final caller for this evening. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yeah, this is Richard Wake from City Council, District Five. You know, just a couple of minutes ago, I was thinking what I was gonna say, and, you know, Councilmember Hanson mentioned about the, one of the issues that you were talking about, about not kicking the can down the street. Well, here's an issue that is being kicked out, the can's getting kicked down the street, the homeless issue. You know, for a year and a half, you guys have been talking about opening up Alhambur and X Shelter, and I understand that there was problems, but now it's gonna be like another six months. So I heard Councilmember Shanir say on the news. You know, several different reasonable proposals, including Councilmember Warren's proposal three years ago, that was brought to everyone's attention for safe ground camping, could have been enacted. And, you know, other suitable places, including empty buildings and other places and other places, empty lots in Sacramento could have been utilized, and a lot of this problem could have been resolved. But you know what? That shelter at Alhambur and X still isn't open. And over in my neighborhood, in Southland Park on Riverside Boulevard, north of Thirty-Fifth, there's a huge homeless encampment on the levee. We have an increase in crime in our neighborhood, ranging from windows getting smashed, windshield getting smashed, threats being shouted at people that live on Riverside Boulevard from the thugs that are living up on the levee. And listen, I truly believe that most homeless people are harmless. I've been involved in this issue for four years. I raised money, thousands of dollars, for Kimberly Church's organization, and also have donated a lot of money to Armando Flores's organization too. I truly believe that most homeless people are harmless. These people are not. We have motorhomes that are operating gas generators on the levee, and the amount of trash that's on Riverside Boulevard is terrible. And you, Councilmember Shanir, you have refused to do anything about this, okay? We need solutions in Southland Park.
You know, Richard, we have sent out, you know, hold on one second. I, I just want to answer it, because I'm tired of you saying this. We have sent out the police, we have sent out our homeless folks, Bridget has gone out there, Bill Vaughn has gone out there. We have done, over and over again, we are trying to meet the needs. We have challenges throughout the city. So don't say we haven't done anything. The city has responded to you.
Hey, you haven't. You're, you guys are removing.
Cut him off. Cut Mr. Wake off. He, let him.
Oh, go to hell, Steinberg.
Cut him off. He's, he's, he's had enough. You know, you wanna just be angry all your life and, and be nothing but negative, and not, by the way, follow the facts, because as you know, Councilmember Shanir, I think it is important to say that WX was delayed because the federal government, the Trump administration, refused to give Caltrans the blessing or permission, and we needed the Caltrans signature and lease in order to get started. The city's funded it. You've done all the neighborhood outreach and the work, and we have been ready to go. So get your facts straight, if you want to keep blathering at the city council. All right, council ideas and questions, please. Councilman Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really quick, I, I know that Councilmember Shanir had requested that on the December eighth council meeting that, or the next one that we have, that we look at what was available on CARES Act funding, what, what didn't get expended. And I'd just like to put a request that if whatever last bit of, of funds that are available, that we guide them towards both, both rental assistance and food. Those have been the two major things I've been hearing most recently about the, again, the need for more food access, and then rental assistance during this time, so.
I'm gonna address that in just a second, Councilmember Geta. I'm glad you raised it, and Howard can add on after I get a chance to make a very specific request.
Very good. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's.
Thank you. Who, who is next? Council, Vice Mayor Harris. Vice Mayor Harris.
Jeff, you're muted.
Jeff, you're muted. Go ahead.
Okay, I, I think I got it now. So then the Thomas Chamber of Commerce Holiday Tree Lighting Ceremony, which has always been very festive, of course, is gonna be a little different because of COVID pandemic, but it's happening this Friday, December fourth, from six till seven thirty at the South Natomas Community Center. So this year's gonna be a drive-through event, and we have traffic control, and we are inviting the public. It's still gonna be a beautiful tree lighting, and we hope to make the, the Christmas season a little cheerier for all our residents throughout the city, but mostly in the Thomas. The next thing I wanted to say, Mr. Mayor, is regarding homelessness. And some of my colleagues may not know, but I was able to use CARES Act money in collaboration with SHRA to purchase a number of trailers with restrooms and lavatories, some ADA accessible, and a shower trailer. So we, we will soon have equipment available to us to, to work on the sanitation needs for homeless areas, including safe ground and specifically safe car camping grounds. So my request to the manager and SHRA, while we await delivery of all this equipment, so it's six trailers with two restrooms each, an ADA trailer with a restroom and a shower, and a separate shower trailer, we will be able to service safe ground and car camping sites. My request to the manager and SHRA is that when we come back after the first of the year, we need to have options for siding. One of the impediments to siding is the lack of sewer and sanitation. So we will have overcome that problem, and I think we can make forward movement on, on these kinds of amenities. Now, I think the mayor has a lot more to say on this subject, so I'm done, Mr. Mayor. It's up to you.
No, thank you. I'm not gonna say it tonight, but in the coming days, I, I will be speaking much more extensively about the very issue that you raised, which is, which is the siding issue. Is there any other, and I thank you, Vice Mayor Harris. Is there anybody else?
Yes.
Go ahead, Steve.
Thanks, Mayor. As many of you know, over the past five or six years, we've been working to renovate a building in the middle of Wind Park, the nineteen thirty-seven Fire Alarm Center building. And here to four, over the course of the last few months, we've been working towards getting it back to council next week for a bid award on moving the project forward. And Misty, Mr. City Manager, I, I am, when we unfroze the my ops, we did all that stuff to ensure that projects could still move forward. I, I get, I've been hearing from staff some concern and suggestions that it be postponed indefinitely, the project. Can you tell me whether or not that is the case?
Well, as you and I have discussed, there is still a bit of a funding gap to get the building to a cold shell in the sense that it will be leasable, but I think there is a path forward where we can make some of these ADA improvements and park project improvements such that we can bring something forward to the council next week as planned.
Thank you. And as Eric Gera noted twice today, you're trying to get as much out of me and probably Alan and Larry as you can before the fifteenth. But officially, next Tuesday, five o'clock, will be the last hurrah for this band of itinerant people in our, in our efforts together. So thank you, Mr. City Manager. I'm sure other people have things they want to wrap up, but that one is very important to me to wrap up next week.
No doubt. It has worked very hard on that project. Okay, I've got a couple here. One, just to start where Councilmember Geta left off, and I'm glad you raised this, Eric, because you're absolutely right. Let me tell you where we stand now, a, as we gather the data on the rental assistance issue. There have been about forty-five hundred applicants, individuals or families, to SHRA's rental assistance offer. But we must distinguish, because the majority, the large majority of those people are within the county. And it's not that we wouldn't reach out or have an open hand and heart to our county residents, but our first obligation, of course, is to address the plight of our city residents. We are still working with SHRA to actually specify the number of applicants within the city. We believe it's a thousand or so, but we also know that this is just the very beginning, unfortunately. That as the winter progresses and as we all await the vaccine, that there is gonna be more hardship and more hardship on the, on the housing end. And so we've dedicated over. And so we've dedicated over $4 million now of money to rental assistance. And what I would like to suggest tonight, because, as you know, we're not going forward with the Bear Cut project for reasons that were discussed publicly over the last couple of weeks, there is about about $675,000 of CARES money from that project that must be spent on that must be spent on December 30th. So I want to propose to the city manager that we bring back next week on the 8th, an action to put that 600, I believe it's $675,000 directly into the rental assistance program. And that ought to be just a start. Because there are going to be other opportunities. We are still working the various funding sources that we have, including some new funding sources, some new CDBG money. And we want to assess all of the emergency housing and homeless investments we made through CARES that are going to end on December the 30th. There are some of the emergency shelters that are going to lose funding on the 30th of December. There's the rental assistance need. But in the short term, as of next week, I want to suggest that we, City Manager, I've been talking about this, that we put at least 600, I believe it's $675,000 into rental assistance, and we bring that back for council action. The other issue on homelessness is that we have been having, and the city managers have been having very good conversations with the county, positive negotiations with the county to find ways to collaborate with them to open warming centers. We must open warming centers under any scenario and under any circumstances. And if that requires modifying the the existing criteria, then that's what we have to do with the county. If there is another way to do it, then we need to find another way. But it is cold. And it is not even winter yet. And obviously, it's more complicated than even several years ago because of COVID, because we cannot open smaller spaces in a way that we were able to in the past, you've remembered, South Side Park, because there needs to be COVID health, public health spacing requirements. But we have to do this. And and we and we ought to do it, and we will do it, I hope, you know, in in collaboration with our county partners. So those are the two homeless things. I'll let Howard add to that. The only last thing I want to say on a different issue is that you remember the Worker Protection Ordinance that the council passed several months ago. This isn't the part that still sits in lawn ledge, not that part for folks in the business community that might be concerned, but the part we did pass around, very important around workplace safety and PPE and the right of employees to complain if they're being asked to work in unsafe conditions. That expires December 30th or December 31st. The problem, of course, is that COVID and the state of that the curse is going to go beyond December 31st. So I would like to bring that ordinance back simply for a a an extension, if you will, for another three months or so. So that that work that we passed, and I believe it was unanimous, that that continues during the the remaining, hopefully, short time that we are living with with this virus. All right?
Mayor, can I make a comment on your first item? I think you're right on the rental assistance piece. I think that there will probably be other funds available. I know the city manager's scrubbing this as much as he can.
Yes.
We certainly don't want to leave a dollar on the table. I I would request, and I think he's already doing this, but I would request that, you know, he reaches out to the food bank as well. They have just been overwhelmed, as we can imagine.
Yes.
And see what their needs are. I think the rental assistance program and the food bank are two very easy places to put funds that can be used immediately. So if if we could add that as we come back and talk about it next week, that would be great.
Okay.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, if I could add on that piece, the on the rental assistance program, and I know, I understand that most of the numbers came from the county. But one thing I found in speaking at all of the workforce programs that were care-funded by the city was those displaced workers from COVID-19 hadn't heard of the rental assistance program as well. So I think we need to use that network that we've created. And so coming on December 8th, I'd like the city manager and their economic development staff to figure out a better pipeline to be able to link through there. And I know we have the contract and the consulting contract to get that information out, but I we have a short timeframe to get assistance out. I want to make sure that we're doing that all in this next week here.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of quick things just to add on.
City manager?
So first off, on the rental assistance piece, I'll work with SHRA to bring that item back because the the funding sits with SHRA right now. We can also talk about the outreach as well. But on the other, with the warming centers, I have been in contact with the county. They they have an interim county executive that was announced yesterday. And so we're in some conversations about how we can open open these warming centers safely, given COVID. And so we'll continue to have those conversations. And then finally, on next week, we will be bringing an item back on the CARES Act funding and what we spent today. Granted, we won't have the up-to-date information. It is what is required for our federal requirements to report out. But we've allocated every dollar of the $80 million the council approved. And so we're working with our partners and the grantees to figure out if there are going to be funds left available. And as you recall, you provided staff with authority to program some of those monies that come back into existing programs. What we're going to do is come back with them to expand that authority to fund some food bank needs as well as the rental assistance. So all that is in the works. And so there'll be a very busy meeting next week. And lady, I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
We have been in touch with the food bank. We believe we can do their needs under our current authority, and then they're going to continue to scrub their books. And we'll bring back any budgetary adjustments on the 15th. It's too late for us to get anything in print for the 8th. But the update report has been prepared for the 8th, and then we'll take the budgetary actions on the 15th.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's nothing further to come before the city council, thank you for a good, long, productive day. Thank you to the members of the public, the city staff, colleagues. We are adjourned.
Good job, Mayor.
Thank you.